Book and cable three in a moment here. So. In YouTube, several other channels.
All right, and at least right now, we have six of our seven counselors, which is certainly enough for us to begin our workshop. So I'll call the meeting to order. We're having a workshop prior to our regular council meeting on Tuesday, April 27th. The time is six o'clock. This is a workshop held on the Zoom platform related to the potential introduction of cannabis as a business regulated and permitted. We have with us David Heidrich, did I pronounce that correct, David? From the Office of Marijuana Policy and will very likely have a couple of our medicinal growers who have approached the council previously, Peter Ingram, in particular, was invited to join this workshop and offer just a couple of minutes of his perspective as an existing Freeport medical business, medical marijuana business. Might affect him.
He's an attendee right now.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll go ahead and start our workshop. David asked initially if there would be a formal presentation or conversational, and I, I think, given the time constraint that we have here and trying to make the most efficient use of our period, we'll, we'll, we'll focus on a conversational informal discussion, maybe just a couple of headlines upfront, David, to start off with. But as I mentioned at the beginning, before everybody was on, we're not voting on anything this evening. We're not taking any action. This is an information session for the council to understand what the steps might look like for us to opt in, which would be to permit and allow for cannabis industry in our community beyond medicinal growing, which was the only segment of the cannabis industry that is permitted by state law several years ago without any action by municipalities. With the legalization in 2016 of recreational use of marijuana in the state, there are a lot of businesses around the state, and we've been approached several times here as a council, at least in my time since that vote. And we're being approached again by some existing current employers, businesses in our community and thought that it would be good to have this on the agenda. So thanks for joining us, David. If you want to maybe just introduce yourself and then just kind of go through very quickly what, what the opt-in process might look like.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. My name is David Heidrich. I'm the Director of Engagement and Community Outreach for the Maine Office of Marijuana Policy. Appreciate the invitation to join you today and hopefully we can come away with some helpful information as we have this dialogue. My guess to start off, the very highest level, the most important thing to know is that the state of Maine has two distinct marijuana-related programs, one being adult use, which is a 21-plus consumer-centric program, the other being a medical use program, which is open to any individual who possesses a medical provider issued patient certification. And aside from those two distinctions, we were talking about two programs that regulate essentially the same product, but approach that process in very different ways. Some of the distinctions between adult use and medical use is that adult use requires mandatory testing, state and federal background checks for the individuals that we license within the program, has stringent labeling standards, universal symbol limits on the amount of THC that can appear in edibles that are made available for sale to consumers. We also have, as a regulator at the Office of Marijuana Policy, certain powers with respect to fines, penalties, placing administrative holds, suspending the privileges of operators, and also revoking the privileges of operators. On the medical side, there's voluntary testing unless specific claims are made on the packaging of medical marijuana products. There's only state background checks that occur in that program. We have currently less stringent labeling requirements, although we are working to amend that as we work through rulemaking in the state's medical program. There is also something similar to a universal symbol, but it's essentially at the discretion of our medical registrants at present. And there are no THC limits in medical marijuana, whether we're talking about flower, which there isn't an adult use either, or edible products. An adult use, if you were to walk in and buy an edible product, the most a single product could contain would be 100 milligrams of THC, and that would be divided among individual serving sizes of no more than 10 milligrams of active THC. In medical program, it's unlimited. And then finally, when you're talking about the powers the office has with respect to the medical program, we can suspend or revoke the privileges of individuals operating as businesses within the, the state's medical program. For the purposes of tonight's discussion, the important thing, I guess, would be to understand that despite having similar structures in general with respect to the types of establishments or businesses that may be operating, there are distinct license or registration types in the two programs. So in our adult use program, we have four separate licenses that are divided among the retail stores or marijuana stores, cultivation facilities, product manufacturing facilities, and retail established, excuse me, and marijuana test facilities. On the medical side of things, we have two different registration types, caregivers, registered caregivers, and dispensaries. And those two registration types can engage in retail to patients, manufacturing of marijuana products, and cultivation of marijuana. So essentially, as a privilege of having either one of those registration types, you can engage in types of activity that would, in the adult use program, three separate and distinct licenses with the Office of Marijuana Policy. And then also, within the medical program, we have registration category for manufacturing facilities and marijuana testing facilities. However, we have not registered establishments in either one of those categories at present. For the purposes of local regulation, the key that I, you know, you as a town and officials representing the town need to know is that there are very similar local regulation components in both programs. However, they're tied to the, the registration types and the license types that I just described. So the statute says in both programs that the legislative body of a municipality needs to amend an ordinance or pass a warrant article that would allow the community to opt in, in essence, for, in the adult use program, those four types of establishments, again, cultivation, retail, manufacturing, and testing. Or in the medical program, it's limited to caregiver retail stores, which are a retail establishment that an individual can operate as a privilege of being a registered caregiver with the program, dispensaries, testing facilities, and product manufacturing facilities. And there's some nuance there because as John mentioned at the beginning or at the outset, there's cultivation that can and does occur in, as a result of an individual's registration throughout the state of Maine. And there is no opt-in that is required in order for that to occur. However, you know, it's important to note that the local regulations section of the Maine Medical Use of Marijuana Act does include a preamble that talks about how pursuant to the Home Rule Authority granted to municipality that a municipality may regulate caregivers, caregiver retail stores, product manufacturing facilities, and testing facilities, and dispensaries. So with all of that as background, I think it would be probably good to open up to questions unless there is a particular aspect that I may have left out that would be helpful before we get into that dialogue.
Thank you, David. Counselors have questions. Council Riley?
So what is the impact now with the regulation on either side to the medical marijuana side? Is it being, being diminished because people can get what they want now through retail and not necessarily go through certification?
Not necessarily. You know, there certainly have been occurrences in other states that have legalized, and by legalize, I mean allow for an adult use program in their state, where you've seen a medical market diminish. Maine is a little more than six months into having retail sales of adult-use marijuana available in communities across the state. And it's been, I guess, a little more of a slow rollout than one might have originally expected, primarily due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The opt-in process is also far more robust in the adult use program where there is a local authorization form that needs to be completed by municipality once one of our applicants has received a conditional license from the Office of Marijuana Policy. And only once that conditional, excuse me, that local authorization form is returned to the Office of Marijuana Policy are we in a position to issue an active license to an adult-use establishment, whether that be cultivation, manufacturing, or retail. On the medical side of things, you have a situation where a program was already up and running prior to the creation of the local regulations section of the law. So there are a number of communities in the state that have caregiver retail stores that are operating, that were operating with municipal approval prior to the opt-in requirement existing. And so you have communities across the state that, you know, they're, they're far more caregiver retail stores at present than there are adult-use marijuana stores. That's certainly going to change over time, or at least has the potential to change over time. I believe we're up to some roughly 25 active retail establishments in the adult use program with close to 24 with local authorization and another 200 and change that have a conditional license. So especially as Portland comes online and is continuing to issue local authorizations, there is the potential for, for that to, that shift to occur. But at least at present, you know, there has been no indications that there's a diminishing medical program as a result of the existing recreational program.
And so a second part to that is, has the regulations and restrictions for the adult use are more stringent than it is for the medical side?
Yes, I think that that's a fair characterization. You know, everything from the fact that we are conducting state and federal background checks for adult-use operators, which also includes checks to make sure that there are no backhoe taxes, backhoe child support, that we are conducting, that we require operating plans for any of the establishments that wish to engage in adult-use marijuana. And that in addition to having those operating plans, that changes to said plans need to be updated and provided to the Office of Marijuana Policy, that we have that local authorization component. At least in the medical program at present, there is a very limited role for municipalities to play in, in the application process for an individual to become a registered caregiver. We're currently engaged in rulemaking, as I mentioned at the outset of this conversation. And as part of that, we're seeking to introduce a, I guess, a condensed version of local authorization just so that we can ensure that the individuals were providing registrations to, are operating with the municipality's permission and with accordance of any zoning regulations or licensing structures that may have been instituted by a community.
And so then the third part to this is, what, have we seen violations to the regulations that are involved with either adult use or medical?
Could you elaborate on what you mean by that exactly? I'm sorry.
Where you've had to suspend or revoke licensing?
Yeah, in the adult use program, we've only had to take an administrative action once against two, technically two separate business entities, but that's it. And that was related to advertising and branding. And in the medical program, I did forget the exact number, but I think in the last calendar year, we only revoked, I guess, anywhere between three to six caregivers. At the office, we take a compliance-first approach and a technical education-first approach with our program licensees and registrants to make sure that, you know, in instances where we find an issue, we try to bring them into compliance. And in instances where there is perhaps a willful disregard for program rules or regulations, that's when we, you know, ultimately end up taking compliance action. In the medical program, as I mentioned earlier, we're limited to suspension and revocation. We do have a proposal in front of the legislature right now that would give us some more administrative remedies, like the ability to levy financial penalties against our program registrants in the medical side of things. And part of the reason for that is because if you have somebody who is violating either state law or the medical use of marijuana programs, program rule, we're stuck in an unfortunate situation. We have to decide if, you know, the, the compliance issue merits taking away a person's livelihood. Whereas, you know, if we had certain financial remedies available to us, it would compel action to take corrective steps if necessary.
Thank you.
Council Bradley? You're unmuted.
I am way behind the curve on this issue. It, it seems that the adult use program is interfacing in some way with the medical program in a way that brings us and our authority into more, makes it more important or relevant? And is that because the marketplace shifts from medical to adult use in some way? What, what's going on from a point of view of the dumb layman who doesn't really follow all the licensing differentiations, differentials you, you described and is sort of lost in the weeds here?
It's a difficult question. I mean, I think, you know, speaking for the office, the, the key thing to know is that you may have individuals who are interested in operating in one or both programs. In fact, many of our early adopters in the adult use program were individuals that either at one point maintained a presence in the medical program or have decided to participate in both programs simultaneously. There is also a provision that's written into the law that allows for a limited transfer of inventory, and by inventory, I mean actual plants, from the medical program into the adult use program if an individual is participating in both. So absent knowing the specifics to what may be going on in Freeport, it's, you know, it's a certain degree of speculation and that may be at least part of the, the driving motivation. But, you know, I'd certainly defer to others on this call that may have more expertise than I on the specifics of the town.
From your position, looking at it statewide, is there a shift in demand or use from medical to retail, adult retail, as adult retail comes into, you know, is authorized? Is that, is that what's going on in, in the communities?
It's too soon to tell, really. You know, we're at a point now where I think we're approaching 60 communities that have opted in to some extent with respect to adult use. And they can, and in many instances, the degree to which they've opted in has varied. You may have communities that decide they want to allow for manufacturing facilities and testing facilities, but not retail and not cultivation. There are other communities that have decided to opt in, say, for cultivation, but in doing so, they've decided to limit the number of cultivation establishments. Or, you know, I guess, and/or they've decided to only opt in for the various, or the lower cultivation tiers. And maybe a 7,000 square foot cultivation facility is fine, but 20,000 square feet may be a little excessive. So the, the local regulation component of the law certainly gives communities a lot of flexibility. I would say that there is a trend among several communities, but not all, to, to the extent that they're addressing one program or the other, to have an ordinance that is, you know, mutually exclusive. Or in some cases, they will decide to go the other way and just say, listen, we're going to do medical only, but not adult use, or we will do adult use and not medical. So I guess the key takeaway is that municipalities have a lot of control and a lot of power and discretion as to what decisions they want to make.
I'm trying to get at the marketplace. Is, is the user group, is it easier for them to access marijuana as a medical product than it is as a adult product or vice versa? Is there any distinction in that? Or we just got two sort of equally accessible ways for a user to access the product?
There, there's absolutely a distinction. So for example, to purchase medical marijuana, you have to have a patient certification that's provided by a medical provider who's registered with our program. There's usually a modest fee that goes along with obtaining that. However, as a result of, you know, paying that modest fee, which can range to essentially whatever the medical provider wants to make it available for, you have a, in the medical program, marijuana that you're purchasing is taxed at a lower rate. And so you're looking at the general five and a half percent sales tax rate for flower and trim, for edible products, be the prepared meals rate of eight percent. In the adult use program, there's a 10% tax rate regardless of the form of the product. Also, at least at present, you're seeing that there are higher prices in the adult use program because of the additional costs that go into the program, certainly with respect to licensing fees and things of that nature. But also the fact that there's mandatory testing required at multiple phases of the, the lifecycle and the supply chain for adult-use products.
So is it easier, does a person, say, I wanted marijuana to use, and I had a choice between going medically or adult use? Do I have to go through more hoops? Is it more stringent from requirements for me to qualify for medical than it is for adult use?
Are you asking as a consumer or as somebody who?
As a consumer.
As a consumer, you could walk into any of the adult-use establishments and provide, if you have photographic identification, it's government-issued showing that you're 21 years of age or older, you can walk in and make a purchase of up to two and a half ounces of marijuana. And, and within that, you could have five ounces, or excuse me, five grams of concentrate. In the medical program, you need to provide your patient certification that's signed by your medical provider, a government-issued photo ID showing that you are of, you know, that, that the name on the ID matches the patient certification. And you can be anywhere between 18 years of age or older in order to go and, and conduct a purchase yourself. If you're a qualifying patient, your, your adult caregiver has to be the one that goes in and makes a purchase on your behalf. But if, you know, assuming that you're over the age of 18 years, you can walk in, provide that, and you can actually purchase the two and a half ounces that I mentioned for the adult use program. However, the definition of harvested marijuana in the medical statute is such that you could, in theory, buy two and a half ounces of of concentrate as opposed to being limited to the five grams that an adult-use consumer would be limited to in the adult use program.
Nah, he's got it. That was the question. So yes, it's easier to get it. You just walk into a store if you want, and you're over the age of 18 or 21, you can go buy it.
Yeah.
There's no qualification other than age. And the fact is you got to prove yourself.
Yep. And one of the distinctions in the adult use program is the current rules require an individual to check identification outside of the retail establishment. There's a legislative proposal currently that would change that and would allow like a foyer area where an individual could technically walk into the establishment, which would still be limited access, provide their ID, and then enter the facility to conduct a purchase. In the medical program, you can have any number of other items available for sale in a, in a caregiver retail store. And anybody of any age could walk in, they just have to be of lawful age to complete a purchase of medical marijuana.
Thanks, David. I'll just reiterate that the context of the conversation tonight is not to get into whether or not we're going to have retail opportunities in Freeport. The, the conversation this evening is to brief the council on what the steps are for us as a municipality to consider opting in, which would mean that we, is the first step that the community would take if we want to have any kind of adult-use marijuana business in our community. Currently, we have two growers on the, on the medicinal side that have approached the council several times over the past couple of years for consideration for them to also supply in the adult-use market, which would mean a change in designation. But before the council could even consider doing that, we have to have a process to go through where as a community, we opt in through the parameters that David explained earlier, and then we go through an ordinance development process of defining which of those four or how many of those four activities in the industry we would contemplate in our community and probably how many to start off with of those businesses that we allow, maybe, maybe unlimited. But that's a, a rather elaborate process for us to go through long before there's any consideration about whether or not a store is going to open in, in Freeport. So the context for this evening is to just get some questions out on the floor for David about what the procedure is for the community to opt in, to potentially consider opting in. And once we do that, what are the options available? And David just outlined that there are communities around that have chosen one or several of the four categories in order to opt into. So it's not sort of opt-in or, or nothing, take all four or take nothing. You are, as a community, allowed to select which ones you want to permit and then go through a typical ordinance development process and involve with land use activity and zoning, et cetera, to go through about how those things would be permitted, very similar to any other type of business. Peter?
Dave, I've got a question. This, this is beyond what you regulate, but I'm assuming that your office sees most of this when it happens. Do you see most communities that, that do the opt-in process regulate? Or maybe do you see more do it one way than the other, I guess, is the question I should ask? Regulate this, adopt a standalone ordinance that regulates marijuana aspects in their community? Or do they say, for example, write something into their zoning ordinance, like an opt-in clause, or into another existing ordinance in their code of ordinances? Are they mostly standalones? Is that what we see?
I would defer to something like Maine Municipal Association to opine on that. I mean, what I've seen runs the gamut, where you might have a standalone section of your ordinances that are related to marijuana, although some communities have just decided to treat it like any other business, you know, and that cultivation's an agricultural process and treat it as such. So the answer is, is that it varies. You, I would say, and I, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn when I say that, you may more likely than not see a standalone ordinance in examples where communities have decided to institute their own licensing process. But it really depends. And there's certainly no obligation for a community to have a standalone licensing process. You can have no licensing process, you can treat it like any other business in town, or you could have a specific designated application fee solely for the purpose of opting in and supporting the cost of the municipality for opting in.
So from, from the state's perspective, the minimum that has to happen is just that there is a mention somewhere in the ordinance that the, that you are opting into that specific use. It can be in any ordinance that's passed by the governing body.
That's correct. Simple as.
Thank you. Standalone ordinance, you have those ordinances filed with you as well?
No, there's no obligation to notify the Office of Marijuana Policy of a community's opt-in. You know, the, if you visit our website, you will see that we have an opt-in list. Usually those are, you know, those, that list has been accumulated from various press coverage. And we'll call a town when we see a report of like a town meeting vote taking place, or the city council deciding to opt in just to verify the information of the public reporting. But you have no obligation to, to file the copy of the ordinance with the Office of Marijuana Policy.
As, as I'm a member of our ordinance committee, I'm asking just in case we could get these different ordinances that have passed sent to us so we could look at them.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly, we have some, but we don't have all by any stretch of the imagination.
We have the good ones.
Maybe that's in the eye of the beholder. We don't take a position on what constitutes good versus bad, unless it might be something that violates program rule, in which case we might have an opinion.
Thank you.
I wanted to give, sorry, Council Lawrence?
This is a question, I know we're talking about policy and procedure. This goes back to the market, and I don't know that you'll have this answer, but do you see a difference in the wholesale market as far as people buy, stores buying more wholesale recreation or adult use versus medical? You may not have that answer, but.
Yeah.
Too early to tell, yeah?
I guess what I would comment on that is that part of our rulemaking that we're currently engaging in the medical program would be to introduce inventory tracking to the medical program for the first time. It's a component that's existed in state law since, I believe, December of 2018. And the office's rulemaking would introduce the same track and trace software metric that is currently in use in the adult use program. But at present, we're really limited in the medical program to understanding the volume of that industry based on sales tax receipts and payments that are made to main revenue services. On the adult use side of things, we can look at metric and see inventory as it's moving through the supply chain in near real time. And we also, by virtue of having that system, are able to understand how much it's being sold for, what types of products are being sold and things of that nature. But with respect to the medical program, we just don't have that information at present.
Part of the context, as I mentioned earlier, is that we've been asked as a council by two existing medical cultivation businesses operating in Freeport. And while David is here and we're having this informal conversation, Peter, Peter Ingram is on the list of attendees, and I had communicated with him that we were having this discussion tonight. I don't know if he wishes to make a brief comment, but as an existing Freeport business owner who has been encouraging us to at least consider this, I wanted to. as an existing Freeport business owner who has been encouraging us to at least consider this, I wanted to just see if Peter has a comment, and there's no obligation at all to speak, Peter Ingram. But I just wanted to give you the opportunity to briefly address the council while we have this informal conversation going on.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you for having me on. Thank you, Mr. Heidrich, for coming tonight. And Council, I appreciate you taking the time to consider adopting an ordinance for what my hopes are for adult use cultivation and manufacturing license. The only thing I'd like to say beyond that and that gratitude is that that I do operate two different stores in response to one of the questions that was asked earlier by one of the counselors. I have a medical store and I also have an adult use store. And I have seen a shift since other adult use stores have come online in Portland. Since my own my own adult use stores come online in South Portland in in the sales volume in our medical store. So I know we don't have any any statewide data, but anecdotally, in my own business, I have seen about a 30% decline in medical sales since the adult use has opened over the course of less than a year. So I wanted to, I wanted to reflect on that a little bit. But if you have any questions, if you have any answers specific to to my interests and my operation, but again, thank you very much for taking the time to consider this.
Great. Thanks, Peter. Any other questions for Mr. Heidrich? Great, David, I really appreciate you spending time with us tonight, and I'm sure there'll be a lot more communication with your office. But thanks for joining our our evening workshop tonight. Appreciate the time you put in.
My pleasure. Thank you for having us and look forward to working with the town as it potentially moves forward with these discussions.
Very good. Thanks, David. All right, so we're ready to move on to begin our regular meeting. Council meeting number 11-21. It is Tuesday, April 27th. The time is 6:32. We'll call the meeting to order of the Freeport Town Council. We're using the Zoom platform this evening for conduct of our meeting. There'll be several opportunities for public participation. We have a public hearing as well as a non agenda item, public participation segment. I'll go over the process for people to participate in the Zoom meeting each time that we have those opportunities. In the meantime, if you're watching, certainly you're welcome to hang in there. We have quite a long agenda this evening to get through a very busy list of topics. So we're, we are going to move right through our agenda and try and stay relatively on time. However, with public participation, it's my goal, and I think the rest of the council, that we always want to hear from the general public, which is a an additional challenge on the Zoom platform. So we try and make it available for people to participate when it's appropriate. But we are going to hold folks to our typical three minute timeframe on those segments later on this evening when we have public participation. Our first item here for the council meeting this evening is to take attendance. This, like many other things that we take votes on and take actions on this evening, because of the electronic record, we have to call out everyone's name just to show of hands doesn't really carry the day on an electronic Zoom vote, so we will be calling out counselor names repeatedly this evening. So here's our first chance to warm up for that by calling attendance. Counselor Whitney?
Here.
Counselor Pilch?
Here.
Counselor Daniele?
Here.
Counselor Bradley?
Here.
Counsel Lawrence?
Here.
Counsel Riley?
Present.
And the Chair, John Egan, is here. Great. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Counsel Whitney has a flag behind her. If we could address that and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me? Our next item is to waive the reading of the minutes of meeting number 10-21 held on April 6, 2021, and to accept the minutes. We have a motion. Second. Motion, second. Questions about the minutes. Counsel Bradley?
Yeah, I'd like to propose an amendment on page 24. It's a paragraph. It's about the third one down on that page. It says, it starts with Counsel Daniele, and then it goes down the middle and it's referring to me and my wife Jane, and it says, "He and his wife are honoring that campaign." And I think that what I said was that we are running that campaign. So I would like to change honoring to running to reflect the actual work that we are doing.
Move to amend.
Any other amendments or corrections, Counsel Bradley?
No, that's for me. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend that particular segment to change the word honoring to running?
Yes, thank you.
And we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and so we'll vote on the amendment and then we'll vote on the minutes. Counsel Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Pilch?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes, with great thanks.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Okay, so the amendment to make the change has been approved. Now we'll go ahead and call that vote to accept the minutes as amended. We already have that moved and on the floor. Counselor Whitney?
Yes.
Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Again, with great thanks.
And the Chair votes yes. Great. Minutes are adopted. Thank you. Our next item is announcements. I don't have any particular announcements other than it's a very nice welcome to have sunny, warm days like today, which is more of an observation than an announcement, but other counselors have announcements to share with the public this evening. All right, everyone's focused on an efficient meeting. We'll go right on to our next item, which is information exchange. Opportunity for counselors to share feedback, general information, updates on committees or other constituent engagements that they've had since our last meeting on April 6th. Counselor Whitney?
Thank you. I just wanted to update the council and the public now. I just briefly, I do not have a update on the downtown revisioning plan later on tonight. No formal presentation, but I wanted to let everyone know about our plans, and that is that we have updated FDC this morning on as the beginnings of a draft come together with the principal group. We were going to update the street gang tomorrow, but that meeting has been postponed. We also are scheduling a meeting with all of the chairs of the committees and all of the community connectors to give them a look at the draft that principals come up with so that they can start to give us their feedback and start to share those ideas with the public before it's posted. And we will be giving a formal presentation, principal will be giving a formal presentation and showing you this draft in May. I just want to tell you that it is, I had a brief look at this, and it's amazing. But it is, this part is a little messy and they they warned us of this, you know, they're looking at over a thousand, 1,000 data points because so we did receive so much wonderful input. So, you know, if when you do look at the first draft and you don't love every idea, just realize that it is about collecting ideas. And that's why we like principals, because they heard everyone's voices. So this is just the process of that, you know, it's 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 a starting point for us to, you know, great things are going to come out of it. So that's what I had in regards to the downtown visioning plan. Aside from that, I attended an age friendly Freeport panel meeting this past week, and it's great. Then we're looking at Freeport Community Services taking this program under their wing, which I think would benefit everyone. And and then lastly, I have been trying to plan some friendly outside events to take place this summer as an energy boost, another reason to come to Freeport with the energy creates energy. I did flop on one. I tried to get Otis Redding's son to come, and it just didn't come together, so I didn't, I didn't make it. But we're trying to just do one a month. I found out yesterday that I had an idea about bringing a tethered hot air balloon downtown, and I reached out for sponsorship to Casco Bay Ford, and not only to have their trucks tether the balloon, but also to help offset the funding, and they have agreed to that. They are going to help us with 1,500 dollars and also going to be promoting it on the radio. I have written a grant request, and I have not heard back, but that was also for 1,500. And the current request is for 3,000, so those would cover it, but we may up it to a full three hours, and that would be 4,000. And I would like to include Peter in this conversation, as I've talked with him many times, but I would like permission or or Peter to to speak to you about the ability to, you know, write a check for these events that were going to help bring business to downtown. Peter, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, so we we have talked with a couple of different groups. Tony mentioned two that she is that are not even groups, but two different events that she was looking at. We also talked with the RSU who is organizing a is, I shouldn't say potential, Movie Night, it is going to be outdoor movie series with a projector and things like that. So all of these things kind of, as we're discussing these kind of small events, they come up with, you know, different kind of sponsorship ideas, and we see a lot of private, you know, fundraising being done, which is actually going really well, and most of these things are getting either funded through tickets or private fundraising, sponsorship, things like that. But there have also been a couple of requests to have this town play a small role. And by small, I mean, you know, a $5,000 event with, you know, 2,000 ticket sales, 2,000 private sponsorships, and like $1,000 of public money funding it. So that's something that I have the authority to kind of write those checks without council approval, but Tony and I both felt that we wanted to bring that just to make the council aware of that. If if we're going to be doing it, make sure there's no issue. The only threshold that I would have when considering any of these things to kind of sponsor them would be that they're open to the public, you know, general residence and accessible and things like that. So just kind of, I think we wanted to get the temperature of the council to make sure that that wasn't something that there was a lot of opposition to, so you don't hear the town is sponsoring outdoor movie night, or, you know, the hot air balloon rides or something like that. I think they're all very diminutive amounts. And the public-private kind of cost share would help to fundraise some additional money from, you know, private sources if they see that there are ticket sales and public money.
Well, and actually, the hope is that actually some of these would actually, you know, you know, that would make money. And in those cases, then we would be able to give the money back to either the general fund or, you know, one of our nonprofits here in town.
Gritty's has a balloon, Gritty's has a balloon connections.
We we actually have secured a balloon, and a part of the reason in securing this balloon was because it's one of the only AARP certified. I would say it's a, it's an accessible balloon. A lot of the balloons don't actually have seating or room for wheelchair, and this is one of the only ones that does, so.
If you want more balloons, Gritty's has a balloon.
Okay, well, I've got, these events are not easy to plan, counselor, so I've got a balloon for July.
Great, thank you. Counsel Bradley?
Yeah, I I think it's great that the town will write these small checks. It really makes a difference in terms of helping Tony organize an event to know that there's a start place. I also think, though, that John's point that you're Peter's point that you you don't want to be surprised by what your funding makes sense. So I don't think council approval should be necessary, but I would think council notification would be, would make sense. You know, before you pull the trigger, just give a run around the the email list and say, "We're doing this."
Thank you. So the only other one that we have on the books is for Coastal Winds, which is a 20 piece brass band with our former chief nurse as the actual one of those lovely brass players, but that is free, so that's great. And then I'm sure Dan can tell you, but he's done a fantastic job helping to bring our drive-in movie theater to life with Peter Wegner at the school, and he has actually a set schedule for that. And and fortunately, the RS is actually not going to be asking us to help offset those costs. So so things are coming along very nicely. I'm very conscious of not spending any money, if anything, making money. But it's also in order to get some some energy behind these these events, sometimes we do need a check to to sign a, you know, a deposit or something.
Great. Thanks for all your efforts on those fabulous events, Tony.
Thank you. It's fun.
Other counselors with information exchange. Counsel Bradley?
Yeah, I I'd like to report, I guess, something everybody knows that is the Goddard matter is resolved. The consent order is signed. They're extraordinarily grateful and relieved that they can get on with their lives. And I'd like to commend Peter and Nick and John for all the work that they did to bring this to a conclusion at the end. It was, it was hard work and it was important work, and I think it was done with decency and respect for human beings that towns need to need to show. So thank you very much. And thank, I'm sure the Godders have expressed their their thanks as well. The other thing I'd like to say is that the Island Rover consent consent, the Island Rover cleanup agreement has been signed by all parties. We're waiting for Earl to recover from something that he's going through to have a onsite meeting between Harold Larned and Earl to talk about the initial cleanup steps, which will lead, I hope, to a successful cleanup and then moving on to the next phases of the proposed arrangement that that could lead to, hopefully could lead to a launching of the boat.
Wow, that's exciting.
That's no, that's that's high highly speculative, you know, and I, so I I don't, there's no eggs in this basket. It's just that the first step is is done, and I don't think many people thought that would happen. So I think Harold's responding. His lawyer's been just really, I think, solid earth. And that's Twain, Brett Twain. And the rest of it is a little bit distant in sense of perspective, but it's it's there and the signatures are on the page, so off we go.
Great. Other counselors for information exchange, constituent engagements, meetings, updates? Right, next item on the agenda is the town manager's report. Peter?
Well, I'm I'm loving these meetings because when the council reports everything that I have to say, it just makes my life easier. I did want to, I was about to say what Ed led off with, just update the council on the consent agreement being finalized, which is great. I agree with everything Ed said. I think it went very smoothly at the end with all parties, so I was very happy with the outcome. I do want to, in addition to other things, I do want to just talk really briefly to let the council know the first time, well, I shouldn't say first time, because some some of us have been on the council before coming back. But for the first time around, for the budget cycle, just to let everybody know what to expect, we are going to see a budget proposal that'll go out at the end of this week for next week's meeting. It's hard to believe we're back on the every week schedule again, just for this, just for this next two weeks, though. So watch your, watch your emails. You'll see the the operating budget proposal go on. I will give you just some, you know, lowering some expectations here. It's not a, it is not a disaster. I usually take a lot of pride in, you know, seeing a 0% or a 1% or a 2% budget. It's a little bit higher this year, and that's specifically due to the fact that last year we used a lot of one-time revenues and expenditure reductions when we kind of had a little bit of a mini panic about what the economic scenario would look like because of COVID to keep a 0% budget last year. So it's initially around, this isn't finalized yet, but it's trending around the 5% kind of mark, which is a lot higher than what we usually see on the municipal side, but we have plenty of time to talk about that with me and to tell me what you like and don't like about it. That process goes for the next two months. We're wrapping up the capital process tonight and the capital planning process and the budget process. You'll get a similar process, we'll have several meetings. And the deadline for adoption of the operating budget is the end of the fiscal year, which is usually done at the second meeting in June. So that's kind of what the schedule looks like. So I'm glad to talk with anybody when that goes out this week, if you'd like to, you know, over the weekend or beginning of next week, if you'd like to chat before next Tuesday's meeting. Otherwise, the Finance Director and I will do a presentation next Tuesday for you. So other than that, we've been busy as all get out here at the town hall. Anybody that's been in, development is off the charts. I'm joking that the the Planning and Codes Office is going to put a table down the middle of the town hall and just stack their applications from that end of the building to this end, because that's how many there are out there. It's just complete insanity. So I do want to apologize in advance for the length of I do want to apologize in advance for the length of time that it's taking to get things done. And it's not, you know, it's not a crisis by any means, but we're used to turning things around in a week or two. It's out to about three weeks now just because of the sheer number of building applications. Um, you know, it's a good and a bad thing, mixed, uh, mixed bag, a lot of, a lot of building, uh, something I never would have expected, uh, to be continuing now if you told me last year at this time with everything that was going on in the world, that we would be seeing that, you know, one of the biggest building booms we've ever, ever seen. And it's not just single-family homes and units and things like that. It's renovations. It's everything. It's commercial units. Um, there's just a lot of activity going on. I think they had thirteen, twelve or thirteen, uh, items of business at the project review board last week. So, um, applications, things like that. It's just, it's, it's, it's a lot. So, thank you everyone for your patience that is dealing with all of us here at the town hall. Um, hopefully things will go back to normal in a couple of weeks, once we get past the kind of crunch of application season and building season. And, uh, you know, fixing problems season. So, thank you. That's all I've got, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Peter. Our next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. Uh, this is a chance for the public to address the council, uh, in live time, uh, on audio only. You won't necessarily have to, uh, turn on your camera in order to address the council. Um, the item here is for, I, the spot up for public participation here is for items not on our agenda this evening. I know we have quite a, um, a group, uh, as attendees, nearly fifty, sorry, nearly seventy. And, uh, uh, so we, I know we have a lot of people that are interested in, in, uh, what's on our agenda this evening. But if there are any folks that are tuned in on the Zoom platform that wish to address the council on an item that is not on our agenda, so that would not be related to short-term rentals, not related to, um, our ordinance changes proposed and not related to our capital budget. Those are the major items this evening. Um, if you have another item that you'd like to address or another concern, uh, whether it be positive or potentially, uh, critical of something that the town is doing, this would be the chance to come forward. The way to access, um, uh, the council in live time is to use the raise hand feature. Um, it should be at the bottom of your Zoom screen, um, that you can either under an action or a little picture of a hand, uh, that you would click and that would indicate next to your name, which is on the attendees list here that I'm looking at, uh, that you wish to address the council. And if you, uh, raise your hand, then, uh, the manager will move you over to the panelist side of the Zoom platform and you'll be in live time to talk with the council directly. So, um, I'll give a second here for anyone who wishes to address the council on non-agenda items. Uh, you would use the raise hand feature. And, um, I know it can be a little intimidating sometimes to be the first one to step forward. So we'll, um, just kind of provide a little bit of opportunity here. Um, Peter, we have Deb Smith, who's raised, uh, raised their hand. If you could move Deb Smith over to the panelist and we can, uh, hear from Deb Smith. Go ahead.
I'm Doug, Deb Smith. I live at two ninety-five Lower Flying Point Road. And I don't know if this is appropriate, but I just want to thank and commend Ed Bradley for what he's doing with the Island Rover. I think that is fantastic. You know, whatever movement we get, it's just great. Thanks so much, Ed. That's it.
Thank you. Thanks for chiming in. Uh, it's always good to hear when we're doing something right. So, um, good work, Council Bradley, to hear from your constituents. Um, anyone else wishing to address the council this evening on a non-agenda item? Uh, you can also do, uh, star six if you're listening on the phone. Um, if you don't see the screen in front of you, star six will indicate a raised hand feature and will move you over. Just give an extra second here if anyone else wishes. We have quite a crowd with us this evening. I know we have a public hearing, so many of you may be here for that. Uh, and we have a couple of other, uh, juicy items on our agenda this evening. Okay, I don't see any other public participation going once, going twice. Okay, we will go ahead and close the public comment on non-agenda items. Uh, there will be, additional periods during the rest of the meeting when we will accept some public comment. Obviously during the public hearing, that's the primary focus is to be hearing from you, the public. And so we'll, um, make that available using the same process with the raise hand feature. And, uh, we'll go through in order that they appear on the screen, uh, for a three-minute segment to address the council. Um, our next item, uh, is the seventh item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda, uh, to accept for this evening. Get that in front of me here. Uh, we have, it was included in your packet. There is, uh, two particular items, uh, relative to an affordable housing TIF report. And then the second one was a whole series of victular licenses to be issued to existing food and beverage institutions in our community. Is there any reason why? Sorry, I have to read the item first. Before we take the vote, consider action relative to adopting the April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one consent agenda, be it ordered that the April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one consent agenda be adopted.
Second.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any reason why we should take any of these items on the consent agenda off and bring them forward to the council for discussion? Okay, I don't see any reason either. So we'll go ahead and vote on the consent agenda adoption. Counselor Whitney?
Yes.
Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Riley?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Consent agenda is adopted. Okay, um, our next item, which I'm sure is, um, a reason for a lot of people to be here this evening, um, is a public hearing on our proposed, uh, short-term rental ordinance, uh, presentation. And this is actually the second public hearing that we're having on this issue. Uh, we had one, uh, a number of meetings ago and received a considerable amount of input, uh, which warranted some additional work on the language in the ordinance. And so now we're having a second public hearing, um, with presentation of, um, what we hope to be the final, uh, short-term ordinance language. And Counselor Pilch, could you please, uh, read the item and provide just a bit of context on where we are?
Sure. Uh, the item reads to consider action relative to enactment of proposed Freeport ordinance, chapter sixty-one, short-term residential rental registration ordinance. Um, before I make the motion to open the public hearing, I thought, uh, as John suggested, I could provide some context, bit of a recap, and maybe, uh, touch on some highlights of things that I know people are interested in and are likely going to ask about. So I figured if I kind of talk about them upfront, that might help speed the process along. So, uh, first of all, I wanted to thank the, the, the owners of the short-term rentals in town, um, the nearly two hundred of you who are making Freeport a welcoming place. I think, uh, by and large, you've done a fantastic job, uh, for yourselves, hopefully, and on behalf of the town and, uh, working with us. So thank you. And thanks to the innkeepers and the neighbors and the residents who have been working with us for, for a long time on this and have been patient with us as we work our way through it. And by and large, the conversation's been very civil, respectful, which encourages me to keep doing what I do. I, hopefully the others feel the same way. Uh, at, at times, it feels like my job is to be in front of the firing line. The only difference now is that there are firing lines coming from two or three different directions. I'm standing in front of them. But, uh, but by and large, this conversation has, has not been that, uh, that bad. Um, personally, I've heard from, uh, over fifty people, sixty people now, uh, many, uh, with several, uh, several occasions. Uh, we listened, we revised, we tweaked, uh, things have changed and evolved a lot since we've started talking about this. I think we've addressed the majority of the concerns. I don't know that we were just a hundred percent of every single concern, but, but we certainly heard the majority. Uh, most people, the vast majority, I'd say, uh, feedback that I heard, supported adopting some reasonable regulations. There are a few that, uh, wanted something more heavy-handed, more draconian, more, more, uh, emphasis on enforcement. There are a few that wanted absolutely nothing, no regulations at all for short-term rentals. But the vast majority, uh, wanted, was in favor of something reasonable. Uh, as, as a comparison, Falmouth did a survey of their residents and found over eighty percent in support of some kind of short-term rental regulations. And I imagine we would, we would get similar results if we did that. Um, so again, I'll touch on a couple of highlight points. Uh, the one very common piece of feedback we got is we already have ordinances in place regarding noise, trash, parking. Uh, why do we need a short-term rental ordinance? Uh, those ordinances address individual, uh, issues. They don't address a potential ongoing persistent problem that might occur. Uh, so if you, if you live next to or near or impacted by a short-term rental that has a persistent, uh, problem, right now, there's nothing you can really do about it. Um, so, so this is adding some, some teeth to that, so to speak. It also gives us as a town some data to work with. We, we don't have a list of how many short-term rentals there are in town. We have some guesses. We have some third parties that tell us, uh, we don't know how many complaints there are or aren't. We don't know who they're coming from. Uh, so one of the intents of the ordinance is to start tracking some of this stuff. Uh, I don't believe that passing this ordinance should necessarily cause any short-term rental to have to shut down. Uh, we do have a cap of three hundred in place, which we think is, is more than sufficient for all the existing short-term rentals that existed and had existed before the pandemic. Uh, we, we figured it's about a hundred and seventy of those, uh, and our cap of three hundred should accommodate all those and, and allow for sufficient growth as well. Uh, the, one of the reasons we have a cap is to prevent, uh, things from getting out of hand. We're being a little proactive on that. Other towns have not been as proactive and I'm trying to, to kind of, put the cat back in the bag, so to speak. So, uh, some stats that I read, uh, twenty percent of our harbor's housing stock is available on short-term rentals. Uh, fifty-five percent of Kennebunk residents are not full-time residents, but part-time residents. Uh, many towns are seeing housing being bought up by out-of-state corporations, uh, specifically for short-term rental use. So we're trying to get a handle on that and prevent things from getting out of hand. We may increase the limit at three hundred over time. Um, but that's where we start and I don't think that's going to limit the existing short-term rentals. Uh, life safety is another thing that we, we have in the ordinance. We're aiming for something reasonable here. So think smoke detectors, but not sprinklers. Uh, so we want to just make sure that homeowners who are renting their house out are doing, doing reasonable things there. Uh, there is a clause in there requiring insurance protection. Uh, the reason that's in there is typically a business like a hotel or bed and breakfast would have a lender who would require liability insurance so that anyone who's staying at the facility would be protected against injury. Uh, that might not be the case for an individual homeowner renting out their home. Uh, with a homeowner's policy, you might exclude short-term rental, uh, plans. If you're renting through Airbnb, VRBO, it's very likely that you have that liability protection through Airbnb or VRBO. So this shouldn't affect you. Uh, but if you're renting on your own, not through Airbnb, VRBO, or another platform that offers insurance, this might be something to look at. Uh, people have asked about a fee. There's an item later on our agenda, uh, proposing a fee, uh, which would be a hundred dollars for initial registrations and the same hundred dollars for renewals as well annually. Uh, and remember, this only applies if you're renting for more than fourteen nights a year. If you're renting for under fourteen nights a year, you don't need to register as a short-term, uh, rental. Uh, the, uh, people regarding finances, people have pointed out that they pay a lot of, of tax they collect from renters and, and then submit lodging tax, which, uh, adds up to a lot of money over the course of a year. Um, that goes directly to the state. That doesn't come to the town at all. So we don't see any revenue from, from all the lodging taxes from STRs or hotels or motel. On the dates, the ordinance calls for registration by July first, which is not all that far away. Um, what I'm going to suggest later on is I'm going to suggest an amendment that keeps that in place, but adds that the enforcement of the short-term rental regulation doesn't start until September first. So that allows you to register early and claim your spot if you're, if you're nervous about not getting a spot. It also allows us to start tracking any complaints that do come in the summer for, for folks that do register. Uh, and it allows for some grace period of, uh, for people that have booked things for this summer. But, uh, um, uh, you know, have concerns about the STR ordinance. So again, I'll, I'll, I'll reiterate that, that the ordinance right now calls for registration by July first. Uh, and I'm going to make an amend, a suggested amendment later that suggests that we don't enforce the ordinance until September first. To, uh, three last things, uh, occupancy limits. Um, how many bedrooms do you have that impacts? How many people that you can rent to? Uh, this is enforcement-driven, not application-driven. So we're not going to, as far as I understand it, and we can discuss this, I don't think people are going to ask you to dig back into records that are decades old for all the old housing stock we have in town to prove how many bedrooms you have. There are ways around that. Um, if there is an issue, there's a complaint about the number of people, we may do some research after the fact and, uh, to address that. Uh, this is a trial period for us. We think, uh, my opinion is this is the, the best compromise of an ordinance that we came up with after much discussion internally and with, uh, all the different parties that I've talked about upfront. Uh, we plan to revisit it in a year, um, and see what we need to tweak, if anything. Uh, but that's the intent. So as we get into the public hearing, uh, I'd ask you to focus on the language that exists in the ordinance as it is, the, the draft that's been posted on the website. Um, there are some things that have been removed and changed already, so we don't need to revisit that. Uh, so with that, I will stop talking and I will, uh, love to move to open the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. We'll take a vote. Counselor Whitney?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes.
Counsel Warren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, so, um, for those in attendance, um, uh, very simple, uh, process here. Use the raise hand, uh, with a large crowd this evening. We are going to try and really stick with, uh, participating and, um, and having, uh, one, one opportunity to address the council. Um, when, when you step forward, please be prepared. And we are going to try very hard to, uh, stick to our three-minute limit. Um, I don't have a stopwatch here, but, um, uh, we are going to try and, and in respectful for everybody else who's waiting behind you, uh, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Um, and so, um, looking forward to hearing from folks. We already have a couple of hands up. Um, Peter, let's move, uh, through and Peter will provide a sort of a one, two, three. So that if you're waiting in line, you know who, who you're after.
Yep. And so I would just ask, we've got forty-seven people in the audience, probably at least half of which are here to speak on this item. Um, I'm going to read the one, two, three of the next three people in line. That means there's probably going to be ten more people with their hand raised in front of them. Please do not get, uh, I know sometimes people get, uh, nervous that they're not being seen. If you have your hand up and it shows in blue on your screen, I see you, but there's probably a ton of people in front of you. So I'll just, uh, read out. So right now we've got Beth and Wayne. And I'll continue to do that for every time I move somebody over who the next three people are. So, uh, go ahead, Beth. I'll bring you over.
Uh, before you. Riley?
Before you do that, um, I would greatly appreciate it if you, if you've heard.
Can you hear me?
Somebody else say the thing that you're going to say, just say that you agree with somebody else and realize that council has heard it. And if we can move forward, uh.
I bet, yes, yeah, we can hear you. Sorry, we, I brought you over too soon while they were still speaking.
That's okay. What I'm curious about, I own two properties in Freeport. And one property is my personal cottage. It's twenty by twenty-two. It's a tiny little house. And then I have a rental property with a business partner and down the road, we plan on retiring there. And we had no notification. The only way I heard about this meeting was through the man who's installing our air conditioning. How were, how were the residents notified?
Uh, Beth, I'll take a, a shot at that. That's actually one of the compelling reasons why we're trying to pass this ordinance is so that we have a registry to be able to talk to people. The ordinance committee has had a number of public hearings. The council has had public hearings for, Doug, when did we start this? In twenty nineteen? So, um, it has been a topic, um, through our process of committees and at the council. through our process of committees and at the council several times. Um, other than some press coverage, we don't have a way to know how to contact short term rental owners because we have no idea who's actually uh, running a short term rental operation at their at their residence. So that's
Well.
One, one of the compelling reasons to have this is so that we have a registry to be able to communicate with people.
But not, I'm not talking not only short term rental owners, but just people that own property. Why not just send a little note? I knew my dogs would start barking. Hey, hey, I knew my dogs were barking. They have not barked for two hours. Yeah. Just send out something to the address. I mean, I've got mailboxes at both properties. The one we do rent short term and the other one I don't.
Yeah.
But I have no clue, and this is the second meeting on this subject.
Well, it's not the second meeting. This is many meetings.
Oh, that even worse.
Yeah, um, we're we're trying to work on how to communicate with constituents, Beth, so you're not the first one to ask this question. Um, but the the council takes up um, issues throughout the year and it's uh, six or seven thousand dollars to mail out postcards to everybody in the community. So that's not something we do um, uh, very frequently because of the cost. We're trying to use our public uh, our public channels of communication on our website. We have a sign out in front of public safety downtown that is updated uh, weekly, if not daily, with uh, items going on in the community. Uh, and we rely on our on our friends in the media to cover things that they are may not be a consequence to people in our community. So um, but that's a question that that we wrestle with all the time is how do how do we get information out to our residents? And without um, uh, a dedicated uh, uh, channel to be able to do that, I'm I'm, you know, continuing to struggle on how we focus.
Covid, it's been difficult because I haven't been up there. And I I live in Virginia. And maybe we should register, you know, just as a person that owns property, not that a rental person just make it available. I'll give you my email address. You know, because email is cheap.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
I would like to say that Counselor Pilch does have a newsletter that he started, so people could go and and sign up for that. Uh, if they're interested in getting information or, you know, follow the town on Facebook. Follow Counselor Pilch on on Twitter, I think, or myself. There are ways of staying involved with with the town and social media aspects.
We have an email.
Sign up.
As we have any no mailing list, um, if you want to contact me, uh, Peter, my email is on the right on the website under Town Manager. Feel free to shoot me something. I'll make sure you get on every email list we have. Okay?
Great. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for thanks for uh, talking with us tonight, Beth.
Okay, I've got Wayne and Erica next two up.
Hi, can you all hear me?
We can. Good evening, Wayne.
Good evening. This is Wayne Jordaner. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'll be pretty brief. I filed a fairly comprehensive letter. I assume that you'll all read, but um, I'm just going to focus on one point, so as not to waste, um, not to use too much time at this meeting. Um, so my concern, I appreciate the way that it's been ameliorated. It's been refined a little bit and it's better than it was. But I think there's still a problem with regard to the relationship between the problem that's being sought to be solved and the solution that you're proposing here. Because I, from what I understand, there's been some incidents where things relating to existing ordinances, as um, the counselor mentioned before, were this were the cause of the problem, maybe things like um, noise or parking or trash or whatever that may be. So my point is not that there are existing ordinances, but my point is that those things came about probably because they existed in situations where the owners were not present or the owners were renting to large numbers of people in, you know, maybe investment properties. So my proposal for fixing this is to exempt a certain class of um, short term rental participant, whether it's Airbnb or VRBO. Um, the two ways you could fix it is exempt those who are rent sharing two family homes, rather, single family homes where the owner is present. I don't think these complaints are coming from situations where the owner is present and inviting guests into their single family homes. The other way you could fix it is limited to maybe just to guests. If you're limiting your invitation to two guests, I don't think you're seeing the kind of problems that gave rise to um, the concerns that were the basis of the ordinance. So I think if you exempted all those who are really not involved in the problem, it would be much less of an overbroad regulation and much less of a burden on people that shouldn't be burdened because they're really not causing the issues that we're concerned. And and the last thing I'll just say is that Airbnb, which is what I have experienced with, has a very robust reviewing system, so um, guests who are who are doing anything wrong will get bad reviews, don't normally get rebooked and there's a strong incentive to behave. The same for owners. If owners are providing substandard accommodations, um, or in any way make um, the stay uncomfortable or inappropriate in any way, that owner's not going to get more booking. So there's already a pretty robust system in addition to the insurance policy that was already mentioned. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Uh, next, Peter.
I've got Erica and Linda. Erica and then Linda, sorry.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Hi, I'm Erica Skolnekovich. We have a short term rental in town. I appreciate the opportunity to talk as well. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, and I appreciate the work that's gone into this. I think there's some validity, of course, and um, the cost, the one hundred dollar fee, I'm wondering what that money goes towards. Um, we also own a business in town. You know, it's twenty-five dollars to renew every year for our security. It's you know, fairly low cost. I'm wondering what that money is going to go towards. Um, and I'd also like to know, our rental is in a commercial zone, so I don't know if it affects us differently. Um, and to the gentleman who spoke before, I would agree with some of his points. Our rental is, we don't live there, um, but we've never had a single complaint, so you know, it's it's hard to say where uh, or if we had a complaint, it hasn't come to me, has it? Um, and our neighbors seem to be happy with us and um, so to that regard, anyway, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Uh, we'll we'll talk about the fee uh, when we when we address the fee schedule. Um, in in general, I can answer that the the collection of the fee is because we've got staff time and resources to be able to uh, now collect the the registration information and be able to respond and process that and then communicate it between public safety and and the codes office. So there is some some overhead in managing the registration. Um, plus it also is a it's a manner of um, uh, putting putting a uh, a registration fee out there that is going to be uh, purposeful for people to 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 be be mindful about when they're registering that this is something that is tangible for the town as well as for them.
Can I add quickly, um, the some other towns take the position that the fees are a way to offset the impact that STRs have on their town or housing stock. And some towns, I think Portland, Portland's fee is, I want to say ten times R, I don't remember the number, but it's significantly higher. Uh, we did not choose to do that. I think the consensus here is that this is is not something we want to make money on. It's just a way to help offset the costs. And and there's no difference in the zones, so uh, a an STR in the commercial zone is going to be uh, under the exact same regulations as an STR in any of the residential zones in town. We had a lot of discussion about that, but that that's where we landed and I can go more into that if you want to hear the background.
I would, I would just add a very technical answer to Erica's question. So where she asked where the money goes, and the way it's set up now is that goes just to the general fund. Um, so it's the same as a tax receipt of any, you know, or any income. So if that's what the question you're asking, I'm not sure if you're looking for that level of detail, but um, there's no earmark for anything to do with those funds if the council adopts the fee schedule as proposed.
Okay, next on our list, Peter is Linda.
I've got Linda and then Suzanne. Oh, Linda just disappeared when I went to click on her. Hold on.
Well, I've got Suzanne. Uh, Linda's hand went down right when I went to click on it. So go ahead, Suzanne.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um, well, thank you for the opportunity to to provide some feedback. This is the first time I am hearing it also, and I'm sure that's my responsibility, but I've owned a a wonderful home in Freeport since two thousand and seven. Um, and it was actually purchased with the thought of one day retiring in Freeport. Um, I, along with my business partner, have rented the home primarily uh, weekly rentals um, through the summer months and even throughout fall and December. Um, less often, three days in the off season, and we've enjoyed the home for thirteen years. Um, and the people who rented, who actually we who we consider that we share our home with for over ten, many of these people returning uh, ten plus years every year since they've been with us. Um, I realize that, you know, the intent of the regulation is designed to continue short short term rentals while minimizing negative impacts, but I would suggest that a six page ordinance with with compliance requirements is not balanced to maintaining short term rentals. Um, in my humble opinion on its face, it's overreaching and it really fails to take into consideration individual homeowners that are managing properties and doing rentals. Eliminating or substantially reducing the availability of short term rental options within Freeport would also have a significant impact on the Freeport economy. And as I listened earlier today, there were issues with driving more business to the city of Freeport. Through our homeownership and our short term rentals, we've supported the state of Maine and the Freeport economy through the payment of real estate taxes, the set, the use tax on rental payments, payments to local service providers who are prepare our home for the rentals, which combined to over fifty thousand dollars annually. Not only these, many of these payments would not have been made, but for the income on the short term rentals. These short term renters also contribute substantially to the city economy. Our renters go to Freeport daily. They go shopping, attend various events, frequent the Freeport restaurants and support the thriving local economy. We will tell you as an individual homeowner, we find this to be overly burdensome and would likely sell our home. And it would just go to someone who would be a wealthy individual that could maybe visit the city of Freeport twice a year and would not have the runners that would come in year after year. I would also suggest that the date of July first, I understand you're going to consider moving that, but we have contractual obligations through December already. Um, the listing of a property's location as a rental property that can be FOIAed puts our home at risk for theft if people think that there's not a homeowner there all the time. We find these very burdensome and they'd result in the sale of our home and I I ask you to seriously consider this provision and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Okay, I I had Linda Albert's hand was up, but then it disappeared. So Linda, I don't have you registered. If you'd like to speak, feel free to raise your hand. If not, I'll leave you alone. I've got no other hands in the audience. Got Deb and Ian and Mark. Okay, next three, Deb, then Ian, then Mark.
Uh, we've already heard from Deb Smith, so let's move to folks that we haven't heard from yet, Peter.
That wasn't during the short term rental, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My mistake.
Thank you, Jake. Um, my name's Deb Smith. I live in Lower Flying Point. I've lived here for thirty years. And I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. I was hoping to go at the very end, since we're only supposed to talk once. Uh, my questions. How will you track complaints for unregistered short term rentals? And if there's an action that results from repeated valid complaints for registered uh, short term rentals, what if you have repeated complaints about a non-registered short term rental? And where I'm going with this is I don't see why anybody should be excluded. Um, and the idea of well, this sort of condition doesn't really lend itself to uh, problems. Most people don't speed when they're driving your car. That doesn't mean that you're exempt from traffic laws when you're driving. You you have the same laws governing you just because you're a good person. Um, I'm also opposed to letting some outside for profit, VRBO, et cetera, set the rules for what's appropriate for Freeport. Um, I think we can set our own rules. I don't see why we should acquiesce to theirs. And I'm excited about the tracing of the complaints. And I don't see this as um, overreaching at all. If you read the substance of the six short pages, it's nothing really heinous. I mean, again, not sprinklers. All we want is a fire alarm. I don't think that's unreasonable as a safety precaution. Um, and I guess I disagree with the fact that short term renters and transients are more valuable to Freeport than residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. I apologize for losing track of which segment you were participating. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Uh, Peter, next.
Okay, we've got Ian, Mark and Susan, next three. Ian, Mark and then Susan. Hi, Ian.
Hello, and uh, good evening all. Uh, my name is Ian Toll and um, my wife and I have been resident of Freeport since twenty seventeen and have been Airbnb being some unique property, some unique um, situations on our property. Probably after the first year we moved there. Um, first question I have for the board is the fact that so many people have said they didn't know about this ordinance. Uh, does the council really feel that this ordinance and the work that they that went into it represents the complete input of the town citizens? See. I really enjoyed what Susanna said. Um, I agree with everything she said as far as the limits that it places upon the renters. Um, and the inputs that we have in the town. And uh, as I said, we have some unique rentals here and we're pretty concerned with the clause in the rental properties would be zoned for occupancy. Um, we currently have a um, a small cabin and a converted bus that we have on our property is five and a half acres uh, that we went out to Airbnb. Um, do not know how this would affect um, us in our rental situation and of how it might limit other people who are able to rent out unique properties. I just want to know Airbnb that we find most enjoyable is, you know, not that we have tree houses or tent sites, but it's also options to Airbnb and potentially within Freeport. I'd like the idea of accepting single family homes from this ordinance since we are present and greet almost every single renter who comes to our property. Uh, we limit it to two people, um, or like a family of three, saying I probably anytime. We never have large gatherings. And I also like to ask that the town council, I know this in talk last meeting, that the town council should, at least for the first year, reside of in the gov reside as the governing body for determining variances and appeals of this audience ordinance. Um, I know there's been talk about leaving with a code enforcement officer. Um, my concern is that if that's done, he is limited by the regulations of his position and then able to grant variances for unique rental properties. I believe that's uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ian.
Thanks, Ian. Uh, Mark and Susan, Mark and then Susan, next two. Hi, Mark, you're on.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, thanks for this opportunity. Um, as you guys know, uh, I've been speaking before the town council. I think this is actually three or four years running. I've been participating in the ordinance committee meetings for the better part of a year and this is at least the third or fourth uh, or second public hearing this time around, but at least the third or fourth that the town council has held on a wide variety of this issue. I think it is ingenuine for people to say they weren't informed about this. It's been consistently on the town website. It has been consistently in the forecaster, the Portland Press Herald and other places. And while I'm sympathetic to those who live out of state and who uh, may not have heard about And while I'm sympathetic to those who live out of state and who may not have heard about it, I think that it sort of belies the gravity of the situation is that we have absentee owners who may not be aware of what's going on in our community. I also wanted to compliment Suzanne and Ian for reiterating a bunch of the Airbnb talking points that Airbnb circulates when they have place towns that are trying to impose ordinances that they are against. And while Airbnb does sort of that increasingly some of their people, the feedback for Airbnb guests is only for the guests and the renters. It has nothing to do with the community where these place, where the rental is taking place. So there's no place for the community to give feedback that a property has been problematic and certainly not for life safety concerns. Again, you know, I've sent a letter previously and so I won't go through that, but I want to reiterate a couple of things. One is that the the restriction on events and turning a residential unit into and some type of event facility, I feel is absolutely imperative in this ordinance. And the second is the cap on the number of people, whether that's per bedroom or in total at a residence, which converts the residents again into some type of event facility or has been the cause of a vast majority of the kind of noise and trash problems. Not all of them, but I think it's been a vast majority. And so I do applaud you for including that. And I think that that's an imperative component. And so I also want to just sort of say that and echo what Dan said at the beginning, which is as someone who's very much been involved, I think this has been a really good compromise that is a large product of a lot of work of the members of the community from all different aspects, both people who rent properties, people who live next to them, people who are on the council, the code enforcement officer, people in other aspects of the town. And so I think that this has been a really fulsome upfront process. And while I understand there are people here that are putting their hand up saying, oh, I never heard about this. I think that that's just stuff lies in the face of what's actually gone on.
Thank you Mark. Thanks Mark. Next we have Susan and then Kristy. Hi Susan.
I'm unmuted. Hello, this is Susan Murphy. I think you know how I feel. I'm against the ordinance. I've been renting for my family property for many years, about 15. And I also own a house in Freeport. I have two houses in Freeport. And I have a couple of questions. One is, are you going to give a warning to people before you inflict a fine on them? An enforcement fine?
I don't think the ordinance covers any enforcement fine at this point. The enforcement would be on other violations of the land use ordinance, I believe.
Well, there's something in here about violations, three times the registration fee. Like daily, the first violation results in a fine equal to the registration fee. And each additional violation is three times the registration fee.
Susan, I think I can, I'll try. Tell me if this doesn't answer your question. I'll try. Somebody else might be able to do a better job. The, there is a procedure set forward in the ordinance, the draft ordinance that would on resolving complaints, issues, things like that. The section that you're reading from, I believe I've got it. I don't, it's over here. I don't have it open right now. That's specifically regarding if you do not register. So, or if you continue to operate after having your registration revoked for other violations. So I guess the stick would be if somebody continually had violations that couldn't be resolved, that they're registering.
So my question would be, obviously I plan on registering because I know about it. The people, and I do not, unlike the previous speaker, I don't think it's disingenuous for people to say that they just found out about it. I know I live in Freeport. I know plenty of people in Freeport who rent, who did just find out about this in the final stages of writing the ordinance. And I think there may be a lot of people out there who are short-term rental owners who don't know about this. So if they get a fine because they didn't know about it, are they going to get a warning first? That's my question.
I think there's going to be some discussion about that later in the meeting.
So there's going to be further discussion is the answer. Here's my second question. Are you familiar with the state of Maine? It's a bill before, that's in committee. It's LD Short Term Accommodation Rental Prohibition in committee right now. Any of you?
Yes, I've heard of that.
How, if that, so that's been, on April 23rd, they had a hearing. They had quite a huge response. They had over 310 written responses. I don't know how many people called in because I was at work. Unlike many of you, I do work and can't participate during the day to some of these things, but I think they got a pretty big response from people across the state, not just in Freeport. And if that's passed, how do you think that's going to affect this ordinance?
It'll be the same way that any community will, will respond to that Susan, which is that once the state passes it, I'm sure they'll indicate, you know, an enactment date. And at that point going forward, if, if the final legislation, after it's been approved and signed by the governor, it says that no town shall govern or regulate short-term rentals, then obviously we wouldn't be able to govern or regulate short-term rentals.
And that is if, if the state ordinance or the state law is more stringent than the town than the state law is what is enforced. And if
Well, I saw that, I saw that, that part, that last paragraph seven in the current Freeport ordinance, but I think the state will take precedence. It says a municipality may not enact or enforce an ordinance. An ordinance, rule or order prohibiting a short-term rental. That's pretty straightforward.
Well, may I? John?
Go ahead.
So unfortunately, in a prior iteration, I was a lawyer and the question you're raising deals with state preemption of local ordinances. It's very complex constitutional question. It deals with a comparison of the language of the state or state regulation or statute in comparison with the local ordinance that lawyers fight about all the time. So any of us to be saying, we know what will happen would be pure speculation and uninformed. So I'll just leave it at that. It's a very complicated area of law.
So I guess the answer to my second question is further discussion?
You, I won't say what it should be.
Nobody knows.
Thank you Susan.
You're welcome.
Can I conclude your comments Susan? Is that all Susan?
Yes, would you like me to put my hand down?
No, no, I've got you. I just, I wasn't sure you and Ed there, I wasn't sure who was done. So, okay, you're all set. Thanks Susan.
Thank you.
Okay. Kristy and then Avanel, next. Go ahead Kristy, you're up.
Hi, this is Kristy. I wanted to talk about just one piece on, that's listed on the current version. I want to tell you a little bit of background. I didn't realize that my day job would come into play here, but I, last year was part of the launch of a coalition called the Future of Tourism. We focus on, focus on destinations, stewardship globally, around the world, Colombia, Flanders, Victoria, all over the world, doing and helping communities of what's Freeport is doing right now, which is growing through tourism and trying to do it the right way. Within that coalition of 700 different destinations, I'm a marketing manager. So what I do is I work on storytelling. Part of my transition into my next part of my life is becoming an empty nester, is I purchase property, I'm building. This is my dream. I'm in midstream of it and I'm paying close attention to what you're doing. On this document, I think it's for I, it talks about advertising. This part is new to me here. I didn't realize this was in here earlier, about the advertising. I do not have the short-term rental yet. Like I said, it's being built. It'll happen maybe with this building boom, probably later this year, early in the next year. I am building my business. I have the website. I have my social media. I have the blogs. I talk about Freeport. I talk about restaurants and Wolf Snack and, and, and really that free PR to the area that's building the business and marketing. I'd love to talk about hot air balloons, but if I'm promoting my one-day short-term rental, am I in violation of the advertisement? It is not clear to me with the wording in here, whether I'm going to be in violation as I am working on building this up so that I can transition. So if you can clarify that to me or add language that clarifies it, I see that it's connected to the into contracting for the use of, but then it really kind of gets very gray in there.
You can't advertise if you're not registered. That's all it says.
Is coming soon, advertising. Are you telling me I can't build my business and climb and tell and talk about the area and talk about my story, talk about the the story behind all this is how I create it and tell I can launch? Can I have permission to have wording that's approved in there to talk about what I'm working towards without getting some sort of you're not a registered Airbnb? I'd love to register. I would register early and pay the $100 honestly, but without having a place, I can't have the insurance and if I don't have the insurance, I can't have the application. So help me do the right thing.
That's, that's a, that's a good question. I'm reading the first line. It shall be prohibited to advertise occupancy or use of a short-term rental. And then going back to the definition, definition of a short-term rental is the the operation of a legally existing dwelling unit for dwelling, sleeping or lodging purposes. So I, I would say if it's not built or it's not constructed.
I'm not contracting it.
Yeah, I wouldn't think that you would be advertising something that doesn't exist, but I do see some potential for what you're saying for a small gray area between when it's built and, you know, when you get your registration application in even.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to do all the right things. And like, this isn't a, hey, we have an extra garage. I can turn it into a room. This is, this is, this is a job change. This is my life change. This is a big deal. I've been, I've been working on this since 2017. I've been going through the zoning, like, but if I can't build it so that when I do register, I become an Airbnb, have my insurance and be able to book, then I can't do this. I gotta know now because I got a foundation sitting in the ground and people like.
You know, I think we can probably manage a way to accommodate your particular situation pretty easily Kristy, which would be to, you indicated it, you know, a willingness to register even before the property is built. And that sounds like probably the best thing to do. And then we catch up with the other registration compliance items when they're available. Obviously you can't insure a property that's not been constructed yet. So I, that seems like a pretty easy thing for, for staff to handle at the registration process.
I will, we'll take, thank you.
Can I just add that we're not a gotcha town? Like, I don't think we're, we're building this to try to like, you know, harm regular residents or anything like that. We're really just looking to get a list of who's trying to run a short-term rental. A lot of people's, you know.
I appreciate the registration. I think that, I actually, if you allow advertising, then you can act, you can be gotcha and fine people, but I appreciate that. I'm not sure if it's the counselor. I don't think I'm intimidated by the counselors. I am intimidated by fines. And I am intimidated by some of the people who show up to these meetings. Not literally intimidated, but their wording. Thank you. I'll let my hand down.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you Kristy. Okay, I've got Avanel next and then nobody on deck. So if you want to speak, get in line behind Avanel. Hi Avanel, you're on.
Hey, good evening. Thank you for taking the time again. I appreciate the modifications and revisions that have been made over the recent couple of council meetings. But I still have a few concerns. Some of them I did send via email and then others I just wanted to comment and respond to other people's feedback just in the past few minutes here. I'm a resident of Freeport, Freeport, excuse me, and we live on the property where we do our short-term renting. And I only heard about this proposed ordinance about six weeks ago, which was about 18 months after it's been in the works. So I agree with Susan that we have day jobs and busy lives and it's unrealistic to expect us to follow or stalk the town website for notification. And hearing about these kinds of things, just on a random one-off conversation with colleagues, isn't the right way to communicate. To comment on what Beth had said about notifying people. 11 months ago in May, right after Governor Mills had put her executive order into place, I actually received a notification message from the Freeport Police Department through Airbnb. Notifying me of Governor Mills' you know, short-term rental or whatever it was, lodging restrictions because of the pandemic. So the town was monitoring and communicating with short-term hosts a year ago. And I would think that that seems like a reasonable thing to do again here. I generally agree also with Susan on the pretty aggressive fee and fine structure. A warning seems quite reasonable, again, given the amount of feedback of folks who are still hearing about this proposed ordinance. We had talked in a couple of prior council meetings about grandfathering of rental agreements which are already contracted or in place. But I don't believe that's actually been put in writing in the latest draft. So that would be something to, to, to nice, nice to make as an amendment to just to be consistent with what has been verbally stated in prior two council meetings. I think September 1st is still a very aggressive enforcement date. I know Counselor Pilch was talking about revising the dates in the amendment versus what's written currently. But I think at least six to nine months notification seems a bit more reasonable to give folks the time to do the registration process and and make, you know, the, get them compliant with the signage and whatever else they may need to get up to speed on. And I think in general, I agree with, I believe it was Suzanne at the beginning who said that it seems like an excessive document or ordinance to really address concerns where we already have existing ordinances on trash and parking and noise. Again, Counselor Pilch talked about this in his opening statement. But I just don't understand why a separate ordinance is needed on these topics to address short-term rentals when the existing ordinance is on noise and trash and parking should apply to residents and guests or renters of residents as well. So anyway, those are my takeaways or my additional feedback and thoughts. And thank you again for the time.
Thank you.
Thanks Avanel. Hey. Got one more person, the, two more people in the audience, three more people in the audience. Great. Next three, Joyce, Jim, and Amy. In that order. Hi Joyce, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. I think you all know where myself, my husband and my mother stand on this issue. When we first started looking at Freeport and the short-term rental market, there was about 150 households conducting this business. And it is a business in a residential, usually in a residential area. Many of the residents use this income to offset their taxes or their children's tuitions, or just to pay off the mortgage before they retire. And that's the very essence of what Airbnb Corporation was founded on. And we think that's a wonderful thing. Unfortunately, there are properties in Freeport that are unhosted. And they don't seem to care about the effect that their guests may have on the neighbors. And this ordinance will give the neighbors the opportunity to resolve these issues with the town's help. By writing in language about noise, waste management, parking, it actually allows, makes the town able to have some teeth in it. If you don't put it in the ordinance, then it does not reflect on their registration capability. If we just leave it as a standalone noise ordinance, they will pay the fine. If we just leave it as a standalone noise ordinance, they will pay the fine until the cows come home and nothing can be done to make them stop using their short-term rental as an event center. The notification, I agree that we need to do a better job of notification. And I think the town needs to look at having a scrape done. There are companies out there that will go through all of the different sites and find all the people that are advertising within the Freeport boundaries and help you determine their addresses so that they can all be notified. But I, I certainly look forward to the passage of this ordinance and then having it re-looked in a year or two years to see what needs to be beefed up or what needs to be relaxed. Thank you.
To answer that last part, we will review this in a year's time.
Thank you, Joyce. Peter, we have Jim Hendrix next. I've got Jim is over and then Amy, nobody after that.
Can you guys hear me?
Good evening, Jim.
Oh, hey, how are you all? Thank you all. I appreciate the time you guys have put in on this ordinance and you guys have worked quite hard. I have been following it for over a year, but I, you know, I will, I will put the sentiments in there. I think sometimes when you're in your chair, like I was once, you do think that everyone knows what's going on sometimes. But when in fact, there are a lot of people who don't really follow what's going on in town. So I appreciate all your efforts and especially yours, Dan, with the newsletter to try and let people know and keep people apprised of what's happening in town. Because again, there's a lot of things that people do miss. As I've said before, I've spoken on this a couple of times. You know, while I don't want to be, you know, say, regulated as an Airbnb owner, I do think this is a fair compromise. The newest version of the ordinance, I do have a couple of concerns that have already been addressed. Really, I think kind of the fee structure for the people who don't know, they need to register. I think maybe some discussion should be had about either some sort of warning system or trying to give people a chance to comply before starting to find them up. I do think even though I like Dan's suggestion of holding off on the enforcement of the ordinance, many properties like mine, I've already booked a few people entering into the end of the year. So really what would happen on September 1st is that all those guests that have already booked, you know, after September 1st would, you know, I, I wouldn't be in compliance on, you know, non-compliance on my property, but potentially somebody could. Now, I think you can, should consider possibly either, you know, allowing people to grandfather the stays that have already been booked. I don't think you, you know, some people would say that might turn into a mad rush for people to book before the ordinance is in place. But really it's, you know, most people book when they want to book and they don't pay attention to town politics and try to rent the place in Freeport. That's a concern to me. One of the concerns I have is the whole 24-hour, 60-minute turnaround time. You know, to, I, I understand wanting people to be able to manage their property, property and be available. But you know, if I get a call at three in the morning and I don't wake up, am I going to get penalized because I didn't respond to a noise, you know, a noise call from the police and stuff like that? So I think you kind of need to, no, I, I think that could be problematic in the future. But like I said, I think for the most part, you guys have done a great job with this. And while I don't want to be regulated, I think it's a fair compromise for what's gone on so far. But I do think there could be a few things discussed again on the fines, the grandfathering and maybe the timing. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Hey, we've got Amy next. Nobody in line after that. So if you'd still like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand and I'll get to you as soon as Amy's done. Hi, Amy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much for all the time and effort you've put in on this. I know it's been a Herculean task for a lot of you. And I recognize that a lot of people are finding out about this kind of recently. I've known about it for about six weeks or maybe eight weeks now. I think people who are really plugged in even to town politics have been caught off guard by this. So I, I have a few points I'd like to make. One is, one of the people who spoke earlier in the meeting, you know, was talking about the concerns that are the basis of this ordinance. And I just want to say a word that, you know, there have been a lot of stories that have been told about some of the things that are happening on certain streets and in certain neighborhoods. And I would just encourage people to not believe everything that they hear at face value about whether there's parties all summer long and things of that nature. We have vacationed in Maine ourselves and two properties that we've owned for gosh, over a decade now. And it's been our summers here and some things have been alleged about how we rent out our homes and the things that have occurred there, some of which might charitably be called an exaggeration. Other things just might be palpably untrue that I have data and records to substantiate the falsity of the claims. So take it with a grain of salt, I would say, when you hear some of the stories. Substantively on the, on the merits of the proposal, I love how it's changed as more voices have come to the table. I think that's been amazing and a credit to the council. I would say that one of the things that I've heard tonight is that there seems to be from the public participation, a real consensus that this idea of July 1 and even September 1 is too soon. And although I appreciate the creativity of Counselor Pilch's idea to implement July 1, but enforce September 1, it still doesn't give people enough time to do the things that they need to do to submit the application. There's, there's work and pre-work that has to be done with signage, with your insurance company, with, you know, testing things before you even submit the application. Typically, what towns have done is given their, their people six to 12 months, nine to 12 months more typically to get ready for something like this with more of an outreach effort. So I would second that idea that people have said. The grandfathering in of existing bookings has been universally approved by the people who've commented tonight. The ordinance as written does not provide for any warnings before the fines are implemented. And with each day for either advertising or renting, counting as a separate violation, $100 for first violation, $300 for second violations. A person could be looking at a fine of between $9,000 and $18,000 per month for not being registered for something that's about to take effect for there has not been broad outreach. That is tremendously problematic. The language around the ads is confusing and it's not analogous to what's required of BMBs. You don't have to have a registration number if you advertise your BMB. And I would lastly say that the role of the codes enforcement officer is a little bit, I would say, oblique in the way that this proposed ordinance is written right now. It seems as though the, under Article Session J, that the codes enforcement officer reviews the initial applications and the renewal applications, but it doesn't say whether he makes the decision about the approval or what those criteria would be. So I think there's been great improvement and great effort, but I think that there's some tweaks that need to still happen to this in a deliberative way to make an ordinance that serves the residents of Freeport, the citizens who live here, the people who vacation here and the short-term renters, and that we want to keep all those constituencies in mind. And I thank the council for their time and their effort.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy. Steve, you are next. Hold on a second here. Steve was next and then his hand went away. So, and I, oh, there he is. And I accidentally promoted the phone to the, the touch tone phone. Hold on one second. All right, Steve, now you're up. Thanks.
Hi, thank you. This is Steve Constantino. I live right in town. And from where I sit, I can see several short-term rental units as we're pretty, pretty crowded in, in here in town. And there's quite a few units that rent regularly. Personally, I believe that this ordinance will probably cause more problems for the town than it will solve. But let's say I don't really like my neighbor and I just want to complain about their short-term renters all the time because I just don't like them for one reason or another. What is your process for handling that? Can I just kind of keep complaining till they lose their chance to have their registration? Or how are you going to really manage that?
I can take a stab at that. It's one of the reasons we wrote the ordinance the way we did is to specifically prevent frivolous complaints from having too much of an impact because right now we have no way of tracking the complaints, who they came from, where is that central repository of complaints? We can't as a council look up how many people have complained about this property or who has complained multiple times about this property. So the ordinance allows us to, to track that and on the complaint form is, well, who's doing the complaining and what are they complaining about? So if we see that it's a neighbor with a lot of frivolous complaints over the course of the year, we can choose to kind of take that into consideration at renewal time and say, well, these, these are not legitimate complaints. So we're just going to go ahead and renew the, the SDR.
And one of the things that's taking place within the town, Steve, is community policing. And so that there's more of a community involvement by our police department.
Yeah. Well, how, how can you tell if something's frivolous complaints, though?
It gets worked out.
Well, isn't it, isn't it also true that the complaints go to the CEO and that Nick gets a complaint when he comes in? He investigates it. He makes recommendations. So we do have an investigative review of citizen complaints and I would expect he has to collate them, make a recommendation presented to whoever is going to make the decision. So we've got that built in, in a, in a person who does that. So it's, it's, it's no different than any other kind of complaint.
And the ultimate decision to, you know, make, make, take some action by the town council or whoever ends up being written into the ordinance is the deciding body has to come after a public hearing legally where the person would, you know, have rights to present, you know. So let's say that you're, Steve, you're getting complained about and, you know, it's not actually happening. Like there's going to be some type of evidence presented before you can lose your right to, to rent your short-term property. So that's, there is, there is a provision that, that all that's laid out in the ordinance in the enforcement section.
Okay. It does sound a little bit like a trial. So I just was curious as to how that process would really play out.
Legally, it would be exactly like a trial held in front of a board instead of a judge. Yep.
Good point.
All right.
Sounds like all right.
Thank you.
Hey. I've got, thanks, Steve. I've got Tom, Kristen and Beth, one, two, three here. Hi, Tom. Go ahead. You're on.
Okay, my audio on now?
You're good. Yep.
Thanks. I want to follow up on that last comment a little bit because the way the ordinance is written now, it sounds as if, if a neighbor doesn't like another neighbor for one reason or the other, starts complaining a lot, then how is that going to work? It goes to the town, maybe the town has to do an investigation. Maybe they end up, you know, suspending that person's right to rent. You know, many people, you know, rent for various reasons to keep their homes. I think that taking away that rent, that is a pretty blunt instrument. I think a person who was in that situation would likely appeal the decision to a superior court, which they'd have every right to do. I'm not a lawyer, but correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's how it's written. And then the town would be in the position really of taking the side of the complainant and prosecuting the case against the short-term rental owner in court. I'd be very curious to know how many cases there have been in South Portland, how many cases in Portland that the town has had to go to court with and what kind of a morass we could be creating. Essentially, this ordinance is setting up an entirely separate court system run by the town. Is it intermediate step? You go, you start with the police and you go to the ordinance, the ordinance finds you guilty, then you go to court. I think that's just very problematic. But I'd like to know, how many cases do we have out there now that you think this ordinance is going to lead to suspension of their right to rent? Is it five? Is it 50? I have no idea. Thank you.
Right now, we have no active complaints, Tom, about specific things that would be covered under this ordinance. So that doesn't mean they won't be generated, but just the answer would be zero today.
So do we really have a problem at this point?
We haven't, we have in the past had complaints that might be followed up under this ordinance, but I'm just answering active right now to answer your question. There's not any that I'm aware of.
Do you know of anybody who is suing any neighbor in court over, you know, loss of quiet enjoyment over this, over the short-term rentals?
I, I don't know. I don't know anybody else up here if they do. I mean, no, the town staff isn't aware of any lawsuits going on. We wouldn't necessarily be party or copied on them, but we're not aware of any, no.
I see. I'm just wondering if we're really just taking on something that we don't need to be doing. I'll, 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 I'll go now. Thank you.
Council Bradley.
Tom, I, you know, your, your question went to one side of the, of the balance, which was, you know, you, once a decision was made by the town apparatus that there was a violation that justified either a revocation or a refusal to renew, everything you said is true. But what, what you weren't talking about was how hard it's going to be to get the town to make that decision. In other words, there's going to have to be real hard evidence that those complaints weren't based on animus or, or some kind of personal feelings. It's going to have to be based on evidence that, that those, that short-term rental was violating specific provisions of the ordinance in terms of, and not just once. I mean, what's changed in this ordinance to meet your point is, you know, and I was part of it and, and didn't get exactly what I wanted. And it, but it, but what's happened is this is a registration ordinance that penalizes only really egregious violations of the ordinance on a repetitive basis. And I think that process is fair and well thought out, although we'll have a discussion about how it finally comes together, whether it's the council or the Board of Appeals. So I'm not, I don't think you're concerned that it's just going to go slicky lick down, down the trail. The way you talked about it is, is really what's going to happen. I think you're going to find it's very, very hard for a, a resident to convince whoever the body is to either revoke or refuse a renewal for a lot of the reasons you, you described.
If I may just add to this, if it becomes, say, the Board of Appeals, that would, that's a citizens group that's not trained in law necessarily. And they could be making decisions, you know, in different ways. So I, I think there's a, a real due process issue here. And I'm not a lawyer and you are, so I'll defer to you.
I don't want to be deferred to, but I, I do want you to recognize that there's nobody in town that's trained in law as a group. The town council is one group that could do it. The Board of Appeals does it for a lot of other different decisions that come out of the, the apparatus of the town. So it's a reasonable place to put it. But the ultimate point is that in order to get an action that really has a significant impact on a short-term rental, you're going to have to present hard evidence that they violated this on a repetitive basis. And that's what this ordinance does and it's decided to do for reasons that, that, you know, in retrospect, I think make a lot of sense. So I'm, I'm sort of backing away from where I started in this by saying I wanted to see teeth and dashing and gnawing so anybody could stop something the night it happened. But for all the reasons you and others have brought forward and Dan and I think Doug have done a good job in bringing this compromise, which is it's a registration ordinance, which has some teeth, but it's not going to be every night, every day, neighbor against neighbor.
Well, we'll, 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 we'll see how it goes then.
Thank you.
It'd be nice to put a sunset provision in this, like say it's sunset of the year unless the council re, re, reenacts it. That might be interesting, but we'll let that go. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I see a, a couple of names, Peter. We haven't heard from Kristen Shee yet, so let's move Kristen over. Kristen just lowered, lowered their hand though. So I've got, I've got Beth. I think this is a second time, John, so you can tell me how you want to handle that. Are we, oh, I guess. So I've got, I've got Beth, I think this is a second time, John, so you can tell me how you want to handle that, or we, oh, I guess. Stacy and Kristen. Beth, Stacy, Kristen, do you want to hear you guys letting second speakers, John? We didn't. I want to, I'd like to hear from residents that haven't spoken yet, so if we can hear it from Kristen and then Stacy McManus. Okay, go ahead, I sub got Kristen, Stacy, Beth, one, two, three.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Hi, great. I was just wondering, so there's a limit of 300 spots, right? So if everyone in town hasn't been notified of this, then anyone who hasn't been notified doesn't have an opportunity to sign up. And I'm, I thought of this because of the woman who doesn't even have a spot yet, who was saying she would just be able to, like, meet all the requirements and sign up before she even has a spot. So I wonder if there should be some sort of notification. I don't know if there's, like, already a notification that goes out with the town, maybe about taxes or something, where it could just be on there? And then it's like, if you didn't look, then you don't miss out, but it just seems weird to have a limit in case people have, like, it's like their livelihood, and, and they somehow don't see this. I mean, I personally only know about this because I do use Airbnb, and they're really on top of a lot of things, so I feel like we already pay occupant, we do almost everything that we're supposed to for this ordinance. So it's really not a big deal to me. I just know people who might, like, need, need the notification. Maybe they have kids and they're busy, or I just, you know, I don't know. If you have a way to notify people before you place a limit, you know, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Kristen, for what it's worth. It's one of the reasons we set the limit high enough to accommodate everybody we thought existed. And I did reach out to Airbnb twice on a page they specifically have for government officials who are dealing with SDR issues. I did not hear back from them either time, but I'm happy to reach out to them again, or ask the town to reach out to them after, if we do pass this ordinance, just as an advisory notice to say, by the way, we now have an ordinance in place, it might be a good idea for you to notify the folks that you have on your rolls, because again, we don't know who they are. Airbnb, Vario, and the other platforms would have a way to contact the other people that we don't.
Okay, even if you haven't heard back from them, they have been emailing us for each meeting, so we did know about them.
One of the citizens in town has tracked and has computed that there are 150 people who are operating, and so that's why we set a limit of 300, and so for some flexibility. And also then, in the town of, city of South Portland, when they put their ordinance in, the number of operating short-term rentals went from 200 to 78.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that is one thing we should point out, Kristen, I think is what, that I want to emphasize what Doug just said. That was before COVID happened, so I think there were numbers, estimates out there from an aggregator website that probably estimated around 150. So I, I think the committee doubled the, kind of just picked 300. That is totally an out of the hat number, but I think they were looking for a high enough number that it doesn't limit people right away and gives room for growth, so to the extent that I hope that was already thought of, so.
And some of the rentals may be doing less than 14 days a year, which means they wouldn't have to do anything with this ordinance anyway.
Great. Thank you, Kristen. Does that conclude your comments?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Kristen. Okay, I've got Stacy, Beth.
Have we heard from Stacy?
No.
Hi, thank you so much. My name's Stacy McManus, and I co-own two side-by-side houses in Freeport with my sister, who spoke earlier today. And I just want to say that, first of all, you know, I certainly appreciate everybody's work that they've put in on this, and the time the counselors have all, you know, put in, not only the ordinance committee but also the other counselors that we've been able to talk with and, and share some thoughts and ideas with. I am encouraged to hear that, I think it was Counselor Daniele said that there, you know, would be more electronic communication that would be available. I can say that when I went and searched, because I, I, like many people, didn't know about this until right before the last public hearing, which was, I think it was March 16th or so, and I didn't know about it until right before that, and I know that it's really on us to stay informed. And so what I did was go to the town website and try to figure out, well, what, what did I miss? And I noticed that anytime that the short-term rental ordinance was, you know, part of any kind of a calendar type of an event, it was listed under the name Ordinance Committee. And so if you didn't know to look for short-term ordinance under the ordinance committee, you wouldn't necessarily have found it just by looking at what was on the calendar. So that's just some feedback that maybe can be used going forward. The ordinance committee itself also is not listed in the dropdown menu where you can search the town calendar, and it's also not included in the boards tab, and it's also not included in the list of current town boards and committees. So it's, it's not necessarily as easy as it might seem to go to the town website and find the information about the ordinance committee broadly, much less specifically to understand that there's something going on with short-term rentals. And I do love the idea of Twitter and appreciate that Counselor Daniele did tweet out about this meeting, so thank you for doing that. And I think hopefully you can lead the way. So Facebook, the town Facebook page has had a lot of great information about the downtown visioning that's going on. That's how I learned about one of the surveys that you could take, and so I really appreciate that. But I haven't seen anything on the town Facebook page that has anything to do with a short-term rental ordinance. And so while the meetings are posted, and it's cool that they're, they're on Facebook Lives, which I think is great. I haven't seen anything in particular about this, so I think that there's still a lot of relatively low-hanging fruit that can be picked, if you will, in order to let more people know what's going on about this. I also want to just address another topic sort of broadly. One thing that I've noticed come up in town council meetings and also in the ordinance committee meetings, I attended the two that happened in between the last town council meeting and this one. One of the things that I've noticed is that when questions or concerns come up, a lot of times the counselors will say something that sounds extremely reasonable, and that I truly believe is what is intended and what the purpose is of the ordinance and the way that you see enforcement going and that sort of thing. But the challenge is that it's not reflected in the actual language of the ordinance. And so we've heard council members say at both town council meetings about this ordinance and in the ordinance committee meetings that there would be a grandfather clause, but there just isn't one in there. And so that raises a concern when we have conversations like we just did, where, you know, we were talking about what enforcement could look like, and what this, you know, tribunal could look like, and all this kind of stuff. And, and Counselor Bradley was making some really great points that there's going to be a really high bar, and you're going to have to show a lot of evidence and all that kind of stuff. But that language, again, it's not in the ordinance, and so I believe that's the intention. Just like I believed that the grandfathering clause was the intention, but it isn't in there. And so at the end of the day, what's in there is what we have to go by, that's what we're all going to be held to. So my request would be that we make those things match. Somebody else mentioned this earlier, may have been Nell mentioned this earlier, and so I would just agree with that. And I also do agree with what the broad consensus seems to have been from the people who've been commenting tonight, that we should push the implementation date back. I think it needs to be at least in the fall. Counselor Lawrence mentioned last time, let's do October 1st, maybe that's a better compromise. And, and the grandfathering clause, and then the fines. I think that if people are going to be fined for not knowing that there was an ordinance and therefore not complying with it, they definitely need to get a warning first. That just seems fair, particularly given how much money can stack up quickly. So thank you so much. I appreciate all your work again, and thank you for taking these points into consideration.
Thank you, Stacy.
I believe if we make a motion to the town manager, that the question of bookings before the enactment date be grandfathered, it doesn't then necessarily have to be in the ordinance. Correct?
I don't get that.
We make a motion that, you know, if we approve this ordinance, and then we say that enforcement of the items which have been booked prior to the enforcement date be not found in violation to the discretion of the town manager, that would cover that.
I think there's a, there might be a little confusion because of the way that the, there was a grandfather clause, you know, for one specific part of the original draft of the ordinance that happened, which was, oh, forgive me, I'm going to get it wrong, was for the seven, one, one rental in each seven-day window provision that was taken out by the ordinance committee, recommended to be taken out by the ordinance committee recently, and is not in the current version. And my recollection of the discussion in front of the ordinance committee, the ordinance committee looked at the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, Doug, or John, looked at that and said, are there anything else, is there anything else in here that somebody couldn't immediately comply with? You know, would there be, would there be an issue, something that somebody couldn't immediately comply with? Wow, I don't, I'm trying to figure out where that noise is coming from. Be, sorry, I'm trying to do too many things at once, run 15 hands and, and noise at the same time, so.
Caroline might have that information.
Yeah, we, we took that out, that grandfather clause, the ordinance committee did specifically, because you kind of went through a list and said, okay, none of this stuff couldn't easily be complied with. But then some other stuff was put back in afterwards, so I think that that needs a little bit of further discussion. I think we had talked about that a little bit. The 16-person gathering limit, things like that, like things that now people could book and then have a, you know, starting July 1, could have already booked for July 2nd, 3rd, 5th, August, something like that. So there's been a lot of movement on the idea of grandfathered parcels, if that makes sense, so that's kind of causing a little bit of confusion. Okay, so we, we've heard from the public, we, we did say upfront that we were going to hold participation to one, one slot per person. Beth, you were number one or number two on our list. At the high risk of opening this up for everybody else who's already spoken to speak again, I, I will allow one minute if you had a follow-up comment, since you were so early in the process, so that we can get to council deliberation of this issue.
I do want to point out that you've got three hands up now from people for second bite, so Beth, Stacy.
I would suggest no, John.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I apologize for that. And, and that's, that's the risk. If we open it up for one, then everyone else is going to want to speak, and we're really trying to get to, we have a very full agenda this evening. We're approaching an hour and a half on this particular item. I really hate to cut off public participation, but we did set that as a parameter at the beginning of the process, that everyone would be given a, a shot to speak by raising their hand, which I don't see any other names out there that folks that we haven't already heard from. So I think I'm going to stop the, the public participation there because we did set that as a parameter. John, I, I, I talked to you earlier, I had a letter that was submitted, someone specifically asked if the letter could be put up because they're not able to make it here today. Do you have a, any position, does the council have any position on that? Is that okay? Yeah, I mean, it's, how long is the letter? It can fit on one screen, three paragraphs, takes about a minute to read. Okay, let's, let's move that up then. It's from our caller who has written to us a couple of times down on Flying Point. He stopped in and said he was not going to be able to make it today, so asked specifically requested this to go up one 30 seconds. Okay. Yep, all right, so it appears the substance of Mr. Markola's comments are that we not, not put a cap on the per-person limit. That is consistent with the in-person discussion that I had with him this afternoon, yep. Right. Okay, thanks, Peter. So we, we did set that at the beginning, and I apologize for, for being seemingly inflexible here, but if we allow for additional comments, we've heard from 25 people, we could be hearing from another 25 people with secondary comments, so thank you all for your public participation. The council will, will be discussing the matter at this point, and Counselor Pilch, could I ask you to move to close the public hearing?
I'm moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
We'll take a vote, Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley?
I don't know where I am.
You're unmuted. Do you want to, we're voting to close the public hearing, Ed.
Am I muted?
No. You're, I can hear you.
Yes.
Counselor Whitney?
Yes.
Counselor Riley?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, the public hearing is closed. So we've, we've heard from a substantial amount of participants this evening on both sides of the issue. We've had a number of runs at making edits to this. How are, how are folks feeling with the proposed changes, and do we have any amendments from counselors as a result of the public hearing? Counselor Bradley?
Yeah, I, I am, have, I have had a number of people call me regarding the problem that's created by what we just discussed, setting a limit on the number of people for an event, and then having them make those commitments before we adopt the regulation. So they have to eliminate bookings they already have. I, I've said in private to these people that I would raise that and thought it was a fair comment, and I think I've heard that other people think it is as well. So if, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make an amendment to this. It says that that provision with respect to limitation on the number shall not apply to people who have made commitments to, to an event which exceeds that number prior to the effective date of the ordinance, whatever that turns out to be.
Should we make it broader than that? Should we make it just, you know, if you have a booking before the ordinance takes effect, that it can go forward? I mean, we're only talking about a couple of weeks, months before that happens, and I can't really see that many things that are not going to, that are going to be excluded because of this ordinance, other than having too many people.
So the wording that was in the ordinance at the time, which was then Article 4, but now becomes Article 3A, at the end had this, rentals booked prior to effective date, July 1, 2021, are exempt from the ordinance restrictions. Yeah, my, my point doesn't go to all provisions, Doug, it only goes to the, well, at least what I'm talking about are people who have booked more than the 16 for a single event. This covers you and everything else. Well, I, I'm not interested in everything else, you may be, but my, my comment, what's, where's that noise coming from?
Who's got a dog?
Who's got the dog? Nobody's, so anyway, the, again, I, I'm, I'm open to hear anything from anybody else, but just so it's clear, what I'm talking about is only the six, the limit to 16. And it seems to me at the time of registration, if you said, were asked to put in information which established that you had made that prior booking, it could be exempt. That, that's, that's why I think what, what I said will cover that. So I know it will, it will cover a lot of other things that I'm not interested in covering, so just so you know. So I know it will, it will cover a lot of other things that I'm not interested in covering, so just so you know.
So I'm gonna move.
I thought I moved. Thought we were talking about my amendment.
I'm, I'm, I'm proposing a formal motion. You, you you have suggested an idea and I'm gonna propose a formal motion, which is to add at the end of Article Three Restri- Restrictions Three A, the wording, rentals booked prior to July one, two thousand twenty-one are exempt from the ordinance restrictions. Does that cover it, Peter?
I think it would cover a lot of things.
Good.
Yeah.
That, that would exempt, that would exempt any, it would only be registrations after July one that would have to comply with this ordinance. So you could take a registration twelve months, so, or whatever your booking platform did, eighteen months, whatever. And you don't have to, you would not have to register your unit if you just, let's say you stopped, you cut off booking new registrations July one, and you had thirty of them out there, you could do all those without ever having to comply with any parts of this ordinance.
And, and you could have twenty million people at your property at the same time.
Right, you would have to, you'd have to comply with no parts of the ordinance for the, for that.
I don't think that's the direction we wanna go. But anyway, you made a motion. Doug, do we have, um, anybody want to second Doug's motion?
Okay, so Doug, I'm sorry, you don't get a second to your motion.
So you gotta be coming close to it.
Dan, what's your idea?
Well, Ed, got something you want to discuss first, what's the most relevant discussion?
Well, I guess my motion would be that, um, I'm sorry, Doug, are you talking to me again?
Yeah, and show us where you wanna put it. In the order.
Well, should, should we, we just discuss it and get consensus before we get into the wording, cause?
Yeah, I'm happy to discuss it, I'm just, all I'm trying to do is address people who have booked events that are more than sixteen people, um, that would be prevented from doing that and have to cancel them if we adopt the regu- the ordinance as written.
Chip? Alright, I, can we, if we adopt this tonight, can we say, okay, we'll adopt this tonight and then and track everything, warnings for everything, and make it active March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two? That way to cover all of this, we can track it, but, uh, you know, Dan, when you said we have no way to track that, are you saying that we don't have a tracking system in town to track complaints to an individual house? Or are you saying we have no way to track it just for individuals, I mean, for, uh, short-term rentals? Because I would think if, if we're having a problem with one particular house, it wouldn't matter who it was, everybody would know it. So I don't, I don't know what it means, it might, the idea of the registration, I think that's great, and that's like three pages of this, but I still have problems with, you know, you have the occupancy limit sixteen, okay, fine, but two guests per legally permitted bedroom, what if you have a family of three and one's an infant? You're out of compliance, but that, and two, how again do you enforce it? I know we say it's, it's about the process, but are we gonna have bed checks? Is, is, is Nick gonna go around every house every night and count? Are you gonna have two? I, I didn't think laws were written to say, you know what? Here, we're gonna put this ordinance in here, but we're really only gonna enforce it when we really wanna enforce it. And we're not a gotcha, gotta council. But what if you had a gotcha kinda council? This ordinance is, hey, we can sit here and say, hey, we're not that way, but now you have an ordinance that says, you know, here's the letter of the law, buddy. This is what we're doing and that's how we're doing it. Boom. I don't like laws that do that. I don't like ordinances that do that, but.
We'll, we'll get, we'll get to that, um, that particular point shortly, Chip. Counselor Bradley, you had a, a point you wanted to make about the, the dates on, on when we limit sixteen or not?
Mr. Chair, there's some, there's a lot of background noise, it's, I'm not sure where it's, we've got a bunch of open mics, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna mute everybody, if you could just use the spacebar or whatever you use when you're speaking, only cause it sounds like I've got like a television playing in the background, I'm not sure if the audience can hear it or not, so.
The only place I see the number sixteen at is, uh, Article Five, Section Three, A three.
Yes, that's where, that's where it is. And the point that's been made, I think throughout this public hearing and to me personally, prior to tonight, is that some people have already made, um, commitments to people who will have more than sixteen attendants at their short-term rental and they would be in violation, for things that they've already done. So I'd like to grandfather those things, if they have been done prior to registration. That's the idea, uh, Dan suggested we see if there's any consensus before I make a motion, I'm happy to, to wait to hear that.
And I'm, I'm gonna suggest the wording for that motion be, in addition to, the last line in Article Five, A three, the words, bookings prior to July one, two thousand twenty-one are exempt from the ordinance restrictions.
You didn't get a second for that, Doug, we just went through that.
Different motion, and this is applying exclusively to what you're, uh, bringing forth.
I think it's confusing.
Yeah, Doug, I, I think you're trying to suggest wording for Ed's motion, which is a little confusing. Um, to me, I'd rather have Ed kinda suggest his own wording, but in spirit, I, I support Ed, what you're trying to do, the two points I'll make are that, one, it, um, the, the grandfathering issue presents a, a little bit of an enforcement, not a problem, but a concern, because how would you know if something is booked prior to a certain date? If you have a receipt or some kind of indication from a platform you use, that's great, if you're, if you're doing it individually, it's, you know, well, yeah, here, here's an email, here's a back of a napkin for a contract that I, that I had. I'm not too concerned about it, cause I think the, the volume of issues here are gonna be relatively low, but it is something to, to think about. Um, and the other is if we do put a date in there for trying to grandfather just this, this one occupancy issue, um, I would suggest that it's the effective date of the ordinance, so if we pass something today, it's today. Uh, cause I don't wanna create a window of, you know, hey, between April twenty-seventh and July one, you can book anything you want all summer, you know, feel free to book a hundred person party, um, because you have the special exemption, I, I don't wanna create that. So I, I would suggest today's date or, or within seven days of today, something.
I like Counselor Pilch's idea of using today's date because, or even, you know, next week or whatever, something soon, so that way it doesn't get out of hand and let people book for a really long time, cause no, the hard part would be how would people know to change their Airbnb things if they might not have heard about it yet? They may not know until they go to register in July first or whatever.
And again, the enforcement part of it, or the tracking part of it is going to be a nightmare. I mean, even if you said today, oh, I was talking to this guy and he wanted to book, and we were talking, we just didn't get to it. I, I think either all goes in or it doesn't, but I think we, I, well, you've heard what I've said, but.
Let's come up with the wording.
Okay, let me try, let me give it a, it's, we're, I'm focused on five, A three, and, and say, this, five A three shall not apply to gatherings or events that have been booked by a short-term rental prior to the effective date of these ordinance.
Second.
Dan, did that cover what you said?
I, I think so, yeah, I, I, are you okay with not, with the, the vagueness of the possibility that there might not be a great way to document when the booking was made?
Well, I mean, that's, that's really Chip's point, and that's, and I think what you're gonna have to do is they're gonna have to, if they have something that they booked, they're gonna have to present, present that, um, information, um, at the time of registration.
The time of registration, right, I, that's what I think too.
Yep, yep, and in fact, um, I, I remember now a conversation I, I had with another counselor about, um, on the registration form, we can even leave a space for that. So, you know, please enter any existing bookings that you already have, um, and the date they were made or something like that, so at least there's some documentation.
I think.
So now we're, sorry, good, Jeff. So now we're gonna document everyone that they have, so they're gonna have to bring a list of all their bookings in?
Only the ones that aren't in compliance, it's, it's only the ones that they're over sixteen, and how many times are you gonna be booking somebody over sixteen? How many people have a house that can handle sixteen people? So like, I just don't think that this is gonna be, somebody's gonna come with like a list of a hundred, it's gonna be, oh, I had two that were over.
Okay, so why are we even? Why not let it go till the end of the, till December, if we're only, oh, we only have two now, what, what's?
Because if you let it go to December, Chip, there's a lot of people in the audience and in District Two in particular that are concerned about big events during this summer. And we're trying to find a way.
Two of them or three of them, so.
You only know two, they're only concerned maybe about one house. But it, but they're concerned about it and they've been on my phone and in my ear from the beginning of this, of this process, and I'd like to give them, um, the, the comfort of knowing that, that there is some limit on what somebody who's got an event place can do and when they can have it booked. And I, I think what Dan suggested, um, it's tough, but it's, it's fair.
Yeah, and I think Jake, Jake's point was specifically for, um, the limited number of people who have already booked stays in excess of sixteen people prior to April twenty-seventh, that's the specific number that, that he's saying is probably not a large number.
Yep. That's the motion.
And you're probably gonna know about it, if you're doing these things, you're gonna know that you've booked a wedding for August, you know, that it's gonna have fifty people in the backyard of your home. Um, I think that they would know enough to, I would hope that people know enough to write it down on the form. You know, or you've got a family reunion with twenty-five people that might show up during the weekday, but only six of them are staying there or something like that.
Okay, so we have a motion and it's been seconded, uh, for an amendment to section, uh, Article, uh, Five A three to add the language as read previously by Counselor Bradley. Uh, we ready to vote on that amendment?
I am.
Okay, um, Sharon, I don't see, oh, there you are, you're right in the middle of my screen, you're ready to capture this, so we're voting to amend, uh, Article Five A three to add the language, um, that Ed read ear- earlier. Uh, that's the vote that we're taking now, just to make sure I, I've got this sequence here for, for logistics, uh, Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
Counselor Whitney?
Yes.
Counselor Riley?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
No, because I think it's too hard to track.
Uh, and the chair votes yes, motion carries six to one. Uh, other discussion, um, Chip, I'm, I'm sorry that I was, um, pushing you off of that while we were trying to get to this specific one, but, um, do you have an amendment on, um, language about tracking or enforcement that you'd like to make on a particular segment of the language here in front of us?
I think that the sixteen covers limiting the people on there, I think, um, I would like to see uh, where is it? Where it has two people per bedroom? Two guests per bedroom.
Two guests per bedroom plus an additional two guests.
Yeah, that's, that's, so that's six, six guests, but.
Article four, Article four B.
Yes, that's it.
Page three.
Yeah. I'd like to strike that, I, I don't, I don't see how you can possibly even track this. And the other issue is if you have guests over and you're drinking, do you really want those people on the road, which is what that kind of forces on it, if you have, you know, you're renting a two, a one bedroom, well, there are two things. One, if you have a family of five and you're renting, and they're close family and they're all infants, that would go against that if you're renting a one-bedroom apartment, I don't know that you would, but, so, I don't see, I don't see how you can track it, and I don't, so I don't think it should be in there. So my motion would be to eliminate Section Article Five Operating Standards B.
To the whole, the whole paragraph, Chip?
Yep, the whole paragraph.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'm, I'm happy to talk about some background too, while people are thinking about a second, if that's all right.
I think more conversation is good before we make motions.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, no, thanks for bringing it up, Chip, cause it's a good point, and, and there was discussion too about it, it, it is difficult to enforce, and, and honestly, I don't know how it would be done, I don't know that someone would go in and count people, and are you sleeping here, or are you just staying, and how late can you stay before we consider it overnight? I think the spirit of this was, um, you shouldn't be able to advertise, you shouldn't be able to advertise a property for twelve people if you have one bedroom, because that present, prevents some, presents some safety issues, fire code, things like that, um, so that's what we're trying to address. That we can enforce, we could say, hey, look, you have an advertisement posted that says you're, you're advertising this as a twelve-person rental, but on your registration form, you listed it as a one-bedroom house, that's a problem, we think you need to change that. Um, honestly, I think that's really where, where this is gonna come into play, because I think you're right, I, I don't think it's gonna be easy to be able to enforce it sort of as it happens.
Right, and that's, so that's, what's written here is not what you have to say.
What, what this gives you, this is the only way to get the teeth in there that says, um, how, how, when you're creating your advertisement or your listing, how many people are you allowed to list it for? We need to put that somewhere, so this is kinda where that fits.
But that's allow, and that's, that's not the occupancy limit, I mean, that's.
So this ordinance, Chip, with, as it's written, being posted in somebody's house book, so people can go through it, or also be aware of the local reg- regulations, which I, finding, uh, Verbo had on their site now that they post local regulations. This is gonna help to reduce the situation where you end up with too many people crowding the facility and causing more of the, the disturbance to the town and community in the neighborhood.
But this deals with the actual occupancy, not the advertising, which is what the spirit is, right?
Chip, if you look at.
Deals with this, and then that in, that directly deals with occupancy.
I get it, but this is under operating standards and how you were going to do this, and that precludes, if you're renting one apart, one, one house, this prevents you from having a family of five in that house if they're all infants. It doesn't say adults, it says guests. So I have a family, you know, when, when we go on vacation, my kids are really young, there'd be five of us and I'd be out of compliance in that, with this, if I had all five of us in one bedroom.
So if you look at four I though, it says under advertising, you can't advertise, uh, the use of it not consistent with this ordinance essentially, and you have to include things like the number of bedrooms and things like that, so. If that language isn't clear, that's what would be enforced, I think, um, not to get to Dan's point, if we were gonna, if somebody, uh, kept repeatedly advertised something saying this sleeps fifteen people and it was a one-bedroom, we'd eventually get to the point of, okay, stop advertising it as sleeps fifteen, because that's where the majority of, you know, fifteen people that show up on the door and find, or try to figure out where to sleep that night, that spill out into the backyard or the porch or.
And how, how long would Airbnb be in business or VBRO be in business if that was out there? You know, in today's world, you can actually see the spots and you can tell, if you're renting the place, oh, it doesn't sleep fifteen, you know, it, it's a bedroom, it's one, I mean, I use it all the time, that was a great thing about the internet when I was running a bed and breakfast, I could show my rooms and I could say, see, this is only two, this is three, this is, you know, so I don't, again, I don't understand that you were trying to prevent, they can advertise it, but you're gonna go look at it, any reasonable person would go look at it and say, it's one bedroom, how are they gonna get sleep fifteen in this house?
Happened.
Huh?
It's true, it's exaggeration, but it's happened, but it also, you know, Chip, we write this ordinance and we're trying to put in guidelines and boundaries, but there's also common sense involved. And so. You wanted to say, if you wanted to be a real stickler, you could, but is the town gonna do that? Are we gonna do that? No, we've got common sense. No, we've got common sense.
Right, this council does.
And then we have something to go back against the people who are in obvious violation and flagrant violation.
Chip, would it alleviate your concerns if we said two per bedroom plus three? And then a family of five could go in a single family? But if the house has two bedrooms, you're up to six already. You know, or it could be seven.
I just don't, we have it in here. I don't know how you enforce it without doing bed checks. And that's a problem for me.
How do you enforce underage driving? If somebody's fifteen and driving without a license? You, you don't unless they get pulled over.
Yeah, but it's always enforced. And so who's, who, who's going around enforcing this?
I choose to second your motion so we can have a vote on this.
But who, who's going to enforce it? I mean, this is, this is the issue. We're not going to, is what I'm saying, until it becomes an issue. Whereas underage driving is always enforced and if a cop sees a person that's underage and driving, they're gonna pull him over.
Yeah, I, I think the um, the point um, Chip, in clarity is that there's a, a whole lot of uh, language in this that is directing the, for the registration um, of how people should operate their short-term rental. Um, but I think it's also very clear that there isn't going to be bed check. There isn't gonna be somebody measuring um, you know, where, where somebody came from or the, these people are staying here, but these people are locals that are just visiting. We're not gonna go check uh, you know, for any particular event unless there is a noise or, or some other precipitating factor. And then if, if, if there is evident, if there's a complaint from a neighbor or from somebody else, um, and then it is found that the operation of the short term is outside of what we've got spelled out here, then the ordinance language allows um, the, the town to actually have an enforcement. But it, it is, it is only gonna happen if there's a complaint. That, you're absolutely right about that. We're not doing bed checks, that's for sure.
Or if, or if there's an incident. I mean, there could be an incident where the police department, EMS, somebody like that, or some emergency services have to respond because there's been an incident at, you know, in a property while people are sleeping. We pray to God that that's never gonna happen, that nobody will get hurt. But um, you know, that, that would be one way that one of these things might get uncovered is, oh, you had fifteen, you know, you know, no one's gonna be going, inspecting for those things. That's, we didn't put an inspections clause in this ordinance, but there are ways that it could be, that these things could be discovered in serious things that we might wanna stop, like health concerns, life safety concerns, things like that, so.
Okay, well.
Well, we, we have, we have a motion. Uh, would anyone like to second Chip's motion to, to strike section uh, Article four B?
I did.
Okay. Doug seconded the motion. So we'll take a vote on striking section four B. Counselor Pilch?
No.
Counselor Daniele?
No.
Counsel Bradley?
No.
Counselor Whitney?
No.
Counselor Riley?
No.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
And the Chair votes no. Um, okay, so the motion fails. Um, is there another way to um, is, is there another uh, proposed amendment or language suggested? Counselor Daniele?
Just on a separate thing, so if anybody wants to go back to that, feel free to, to jump in. But somebody mentioned renting out a camper or a bus. And I think that would be just a good thing to have a quick conversation about how does that fit into this ordinance? Or just like a shack or, you know, like what, what are the, if it doesn't have a bedroom, like a bus, what's the, how's that fit?
But doesn't a dwelling unit deal with that? The definition of dwelling unit, Peter?
Caroline, did you have any input on that?
Yes, yes, that, that would be the thought that we had, I think. Is that, that dwelling unit, there are things that are not, I mean, we should be very clear about that. That's a good thing to bring it up for discussion, because there are things that aren't dwelling units that are contemplated as rentals maybe that aren't, that would not be covered under this ordinance, isn't allowed use, so.
Yep, like.
There's something, right? Well, something in the dwelling unit definition, if somebody could bring it up, said, talks about uh, vehicles whose wheels are on the ground. Is that right? Is that my recollection correct?
Uh, there were, that's, yeah, I'm gonna have to look for it, but that, there's a provision for motor vehicles um, that are campers, RVs, that are licensed with their wheels on the ground. So uh, not, not like a single Y that would be technically an over-the-road capable vehicle that's on blocks or, you know, on a basement.
Right.
So it doesn't, it, the, this ordinance does not intend to regulate those type of things. Because if it's, if it's a registered motor vehicle, then like an RV that's actually registered that can move, that's not the intended, right?
Right.
Do you want me to put that up?
I just don't remember what it says.
Can you see it here? Dwelling unit residential. This is what I think you're referring to. It doesn't include hotel motel, rooming house, temporary trailers or recreational vehicles with its tires on the ground and registered with the State Division of Motor Vehicles, not considered a dwelling unit. Yeah, this is designed, so it only applies to dwelling units or spaces permitted for human habitation. It wouldn't include a trailer in your yard or a bus or other things you might be renting that weren't permitted.
So. Could I wood a treehouse and rent?
If your treehouse was a permit, was permitted as a dwelling unit, we might have one.
But why does it have to be a dwelling unit in order to do it? Do I have to have, does it have to be a dwelling unit to make it a short-term rental?
Yes.
Yes, because if it's not permitted to be living in, you shouldn't be living in it. There's no way to verify that it meets code and that it's safe for people to be staying there. We wouldn't know that it needs egress and other life safety requirements. So that's the concern.
And just to follow up, what about tenting?
Does it have a kitchen?
Tenting outside of a campground would not be, would be something that this ordinance would probably be a foul of this ordinance, but a, but a, like renting a tent in a non-campground, um, unless you permit the tent like a yurt, like a fixed structure, um, would not be contemplated as being allowed in this ordinance. So you own a piece of property, you've got a platform, you put up a big canvas tent and you rent it out. You know, and it's not a permitted structure, it's not a dwelling unit under the ordinance. Um, this ordinance would specifically not let those things go.
But like Winslow and Wolfsnack would be okay because they're listed elsewhere.
They, yeah, they're, those are not short-term rentals, because those are separate uses. Those are campgrounds and things like that.
Yeah, so I think the distinction there is that those other, those, those other potential manifestations of what someone might rent are not considered dwelling units and therefore not covered by this ordinance.
Well, are they not covered by this ordinance or are they prohibited by this ordinance? That's a, that's an important distinction.
Yeah, thi- this ordinance is allowing things that are otherwise prohibited. Right, I mean, you, th- these are, this is allowing businesses in residential areas. Right, I mean, that's, that's what they get. Uh, you know, nobody's talked much about that, but we, but that's what this ordinance does. It, it, it legalizes uh, a commercial use uh, or rental of space in a residential area. And we're putting some restrictions around that to make sure it's reasonable for the neighbors.
So then, so then the, the, I guess the definition then for those non-conforming would be if it's not considered dwelling unit, then it's not allowed to be a short-term rental?
So five, Article five A two. So the following activities are prohibited. Offering a short-term rental in a structure that was not permitted by the town of Freeport for human habitation.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So you could rent a space of ground and put a bivvy sack on it and sleep out under the stars. That's about the only thing I think that you, that if it, but if it's in a structure, if it's in a treehouse, if it's in a tent, if it's in a bus, um, well, bus, if it's, wheels are on the ground and it's not registered, right, that type of bus, um, that, that this ordinance does not allow those things.
So that person that has a bus that he rents out can now not rent his bus out.
Unless he registers the bus, in which case it would be fine. Doesn't probably actually technically have to move. Right?
Yeah, but I think Chip's right. If, if somebody's got an old, say, school bus out in the back forty and it's got uh, no wheels and it's, you know, it's just a, there, i- this ordinance doesn't allow it. And then it, it's, i- it is, it's not, it's not habitable under the, the town's rules.
Yeah, that's what we'd go for like a caboose.
Kinda like a steel boat out in the, somebody's.
But that's no change, Chip. We're not, this ordinance doesn't change that. It just, it just confirms that.
Well, I think, right, he's, he's renting the bus, bus out now, right? He's, he's.
Well, he's illegally though, illegally.
No, it's, it's a short-term rental, it's on his property, so people.
It's not a short-term rental. It's, we just, we, it, the only things that are allowed are the things that are short-term rentals. And those are the things we define. I mean, I, again, I'm not the expert on this, but that's how I understand how this works.
Gotta take this quick call, because I got something going on at work, so I'll be right back.
Does the council wanna make a small change that if it doesn't have a kitchen or a bathroom, you can still rent it out with, you know, some, like, you know, this could be an ordinance thing for later that we could change, but somehow say like you can have up to so many people in a structure that doesn't have a kitchen or a bathroom if people wanna rent it. I mean, that would kind of allow the bus to go.
Is that what you want in, in your residential neighborhoods? You, you wanna approve all that?
I'm not saying some infinite number, but I, I could see the appeal of going to some town away from my house and, you know, you know, camping, but in a unique setting. I mean, I can see the appeal of doing something unique. And if somebody's got a really cool bus or something, that might be nice. But do I want it to be infinite? No.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, my position, I guess, and just as a member of the council here for sure, is to um, is to say that we're, we're potentially trying to describe something that we don't even know what the size, shape and, and nature is of it. And so I think until we had further information, I think the language uh, that's in here, um, uh, it is, is definitive enough that if, if there's going, if we're going to allow anything to be used as a short-term rental, it has to be uh, an allowable dwelling unit. And if someone wants to come in and explain and give details about why they're unique, fill in the blank, whatever it is, a yurt or a bus or a treehouse, um, then I think um, uh, you know, we can consider ways on how we might get to a place where those things could be considered alternative dwelling units or something like that. But I, I, I don't think we should try and speculate on those tonight without any specific evidence. Um, and I think the, my position is that the, the, one of the purposes of, of this ordinance is to um, is to have some clear definitions. And, and I think the dwelling unit as uh, the, of what the town considers a dwelling unit i- is a very viable definition.
I agree with what you said, John.
Dan, you had uh, some date changes you wanted to put in?
I do, um, and before I kind of, you know, commit to the wording in an amendment, um, I'll reiterate what I'd said in my opening comments, which was that um, I was going to leave in the language suggesting that people register by July first, which is Article three A. Um, basically saying that the regulation says you shall not operate a short-term rental without receiving a registration number after July first. But then in, that towards the end, um, I guess it's five E, where we're talking about enforcement, I was gonna suggest that um, the, the fines related to enforcing uh, registration don't start until September first. So essentially what that means is if you operate in July and August without having a registration, uh, you're not gonna get fined. Um, but if you wanna make sure to grab your spot of the three hundred, if that's a concern to you, um, you're, you have the incentive of registering early and meeting that July one date.
What line do you wanna put that in?
Well, again, I wanna get consensus that, that's the right um, date.
What's the thinking, what's your thinking, Dan?
What, my thinking is that, you know, to address the concerns of people who are saying that I didn't know, the communication was difficult, um, you know, there's some valid points there. Uh, so instead of saying July first, which is at this point, you know, our, our process has slipped, but that date hasn't, uh, well, it has slipped a little, but, so we're, we're talking about, you have May and June, you have two months to comply before you start getting fined if we don't change anything. So as of July second, somebody could be fined. Hopefully they get a warning first, that's what I would prefer. Um, but that seems a little aggressive to me, to start fining people or potentially fining people in sixty days. So this gets a little bit of a gray period.
No change in Article three A.
Correct.
Correct, just like five. In Article five.
E. It would be in five E.
And where are you gonna put it?
My suggestion is um, be at the beginning, so the, there's sort of a, a title of that section, failure or refusal to obtain short-term rental registration enforcement. And then after that, I would add effective September first, two thousand twenty-one come with failure to, failure or refusal to obtain and so forth. So adding in the language, effective on September first, two thousand twenty-one.
Make that as a motion?
Well, I wanna get consensus first before throwing it out as a motion, because people may wanna suggest it.
Yeah, Dan, what, what was the, or, or Doug, what was the um, intent behind the each day that a violation continues shall constitute a separate violation? That, that seems pretty aggressive as well.
Yeah, I, I wrote that down as a note, because it came up when people talked about the fines. I, I don't think the intent is um, every day that elapses since a violation is detected. It's more about every day that you continue to rent without being registered. And the reason why the fines seem high the way some people are portraying it is that um, if you think about, let's say you're renting out a place for two hundred bucks a night and then we find you're doing it without registering it, we're saying, okay, if we, you know, we find out and we warn you and okay, now we're saying you really gotta stop it, your fine for the first night is a hundred dollars for this two hundred dollar a night place that you're renting out. And if you continue to do it, now it's a three hundred dollar a night fine for every night you rent it. So in theory, if I have a large house that I'm renting out for five hundred dollars a night, I'm not sure I should say this in public, but I could continue renting it, pay the three hundred dollar fine and still make a two hundred dollar profit. So while the fines seem excessive to some, they're probably not high enough for others. Um, but I think with an average rental rate of around two hundred dollars in Freeport, i- it covers most people. So the first night's penalty would be painful. The ongoing night's penalty would be more than the average rental rate.
And there are properties where that amount is not a deterrent.
Right.
That we have, that we are aware of in Freeport where three hundred dollars a night, ad infinitum would not be a deterrent.
It, it may not be a deterrent. We don't know that it's not a deterrent. It, it may not be a deterrent.
Three hundred dollars, three hundred dollars a night is a deterrent. I don't care who you are. If you could, if you could get away, if you could by registration do without it. I, I like the warning idea, Dan. If, if, um, if you could, if you could make this apply only after failure to uh, register after a uh, warning of, of two-week period, something like that.
And, and if we look to our later topic of uh, uh, fees on the third page in the bottom, it, it shows the proposed short-term rental registration fee and then the next line is short-term rental registration late fee, which may be conflicting is, is what we're doing. So we may need to change that language, Caroline.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? I was sorry, I was focused on earlier thing to clarify for you guys.
So we have the short-term rental uh, un- under fees, the short-term rental registration fee of a hundred dollars and then the short-term rental registration late fee of two hundred dollars.
Those are two separate uh, fees that are called on the ordinance, Doug. Everything else in here references that hundred dollar fee. So the, the fines and fees in the section A that we're just talking about is all multiples of that hundred dollars. It's either one X or three X that hundred dollars. The, the two hundred dollar late fee is a separate um, fee that's called on the registration section that is not referenced as two times. You could do that if you want, but that might be way too complicated for this hour. Um, you know, you could say it's two times the yearly rental fee, but we just listed it as two hundred.
So, but isn't, are we in conflict if we say that they haven't registered in, in three or four days now? And we're up to the twelve hundred dollars for a fee collection?
And they have to pay two hundred dollars to register late.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the, the amounts and the, the penalties and all that are all the complete discretion of the council. So that, that's a political question. We're not, I don't think staff's taking a position on that.
Caroline?
I, I just wanted to clarify, I think at one point this might have said shall and at some point it changed to maybe subject to fees and fines. I think the intent was that we would. Think the intent was that we would try to work with people before we hit them with fines. And that's why that wording was changed to a may. I can't remember at what point in time. I've been through many conversations.
That was recently at the ordinance committee or immediately after the ordinance committee before the last council meeting, I think.
That's the third sentence under E.
Where are we talking about the may?
Um, under E, third sentence down and maybe subject to fines on penalties as set forth.
Is that in Article 3?
Um.
Five.
Article 5.
But to get to Dan's point, I think, is that that's not a guarantee. It's just based on goodwill of somebody not pursuing those fines. And if you want to make sure that there is a guaranteed warning period, you want that written into the ordinance. Or or sorry, Dan's point is a grace period, but I think the other point that's being made is that Ed suggested is a warning period in place of the first violation or in addition before the first violation or something like that. Both of which are definitely things that I've heard from the public end tonight. So.
Going back to Dan's grace period, if there's a late fee, does the late fee get charged for those people? AKA like, is it $100 until Dan's grace period is over? Rather than the $200 for July to September? You have to register by July 1st, even though we're not enforcing it until September. Technically, if you register in August, you're getting $200 fine. You know, you're getting a $200 registration fee. I don't think that was Dan's intent, but just pointing out.
Yep, I think you're correct. I think that's how that would go.
Yeah. Additional incentive to register by July 1st. Um, because if you choose to say, well, I don't have to because enforcement doesn't happen till September, then it's just going to cost you 200 bucks instead of 100 bucks to register.
Well, I thought the point was to give everybody a grace period because now we only have two months. So yes, register by July 1st, but we're not enforcing the $200 fine till September, or I would say go to October, just because we've had a hard time getting a hold of everybody, although everybody is registered supposedly on VBRO and uh Airbnb. So we could go out and find them and tell them, hey, you need to do this. But we couldn't do that to tell them, hey, we're writing this this document.
Yeah, okay, we we don't have the contact information for the Airbnb folks. Airbnb does, and my understanding is they have been in touch and they have been emailing people since March.
Right. But what I'm saying is we could go out and look for Freeport Maine and we can see all of them, but.
But we don't have contact information. We don't have addresses or contacts.
The late fee and the way it's worded does not apply to first registration cycle. I knew I knew we did something when we were something right when we were drafting this ordinance the first time around. See, Ed, it wasn't completely cracked up.
Okay, so there's no, there's no 200. That that does seem like a sort of a trap door there that if um, so I'm glad to hear that that there is no $200 fine if you're registering in August. Um, but it is.
It says in G, beginning on March 1st of 22, and then fall further down that paragraph, any renewal applications received after that date will be considered late. So after March 1st of each calendar year is what it's talking. So it's not talking about the initial registration cycle.
There you're talking Article 3G.
We are, yep. F and G. F is the first nine month cycle and then G is the first this the first full year cycle starting in March of next year.
Yeah.
Those dates stay true.
Yeah, nice to keep that reminding us where we are because we're jumping all over the place and we kind of get lost.
So uh, Dan, you to go back to your motion, then you wanted to um, well, I don't know what you want to do. Why don't you say what you wanted to do?
Two things, and then let's take them separately. So the first one, it it seems like there's not a lot of opposition. So I'll go ahead and formalize it into a motion. Which is that for Article 5E uh after or, you know, after the words failure or refusal to obtain short term rental registration enforcement, I would add effective September 1st, 2021.
Second.
Is that the extent of your edit on that one, Dan?
Uh, yes, because I want to have the any anything else we do in terms of warning be a separate thing.
Okay.
So which one? Say it again.
So I'm going to add effective September 1st, 2021 into Article 5E, which is the the paragraph that talks about all the fines for operating without registration, just saying there basically is not going to be fines before September 1st.
I think the time is a little too short.
Dan, if if we do Dan, if if we do that, does that mean that none of the other provisions of this ordinance apply to short term rentals until September 1, 2021? 21?
My understanding is that the other parts of the ordinance, like noise, trash, parking, things like that are not subject to these fines anyway. My understanding is those other things get collected, investigated and submitted at renewal time or in, you know, severe cases for revocation. So the fines are, it's irrelevant whether those fines apply uh September 1st or July 1st or whatever. But the idea is that we would be able to collect those complaints starting July 1st for anybody who's registered.
So the effective September 1 language applies only to uh failure or refusal to obtain a short term rental registration or advertising it as such.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, we ready to vote on that motion? We have a second. Yeah, we have a seconded. Okay, uh, Councillor Pilch?
Yes.
Councillor Daniele?
Yes.
Councillor Bradley?
Yes.
Councillor Whitney?
Yes.
Council Riley?
Yes.
Council Lawrence?
No, I think the door date that we're forcing is is too short of a time.
Uh, and the the chair votes, no, I I agree with Chip. I I think, but the motion carries five to two. Um, and so we'll insert uh September. Was it September 1 or September 30?
September 1.
Um, 2021 into section 5E uh at the end of the second sentence.
There's no harm in making that date later. I know you just voted, but if somebody, it sounds like two of you want a later date. If two of the other five that just voted yes also go on with a later date, we can make that a month later or seven months later, whatever, Dan.
Um, we we have, we had the vote, so.
No, I I agree. Like if I want us to talk about it. So if you guys want a later date, I wish you had said that prior to Dan. That's why Dan gave so much time. So I think we need to articulate what we want as councillors. So.
Well, I recommended March 20, March 2022, and then I said October. Okay.
Yeah, but but Chip, you were talking about everything, not just this.
Or one person is different than two, you know, like, I don't know. I'd like to see people express what they want.
Well, I would like to see, I think we're pushing this through. I think it we need, we need more time. You want to put something in? You want to get it started right now? Fine. But then we should delay. It's in it's total enforcement. I don't, I don't say we we want to track all this. This is what everyone says. And then.
Been two years, two years, and you want more time?
Yes, I do. Yep. I want to make it right.
So Chip, what what is your date? And Councillor Egan, what's your date? Or Councillor Lawrence and Councillor Egan?
I think we, if we want to vote on it today and make it okay, put it in place, but I don't think we uh, I think we track everything and we do warnings until the first full time around October March 27, uh, March 2022. That way it gives everyone time to get into compliance. Everybody can register. And then, and then, okay, you've had enough time to do this. Get it in. I mean, I I have, I still have a lot of harder that shirt with we're requiring them to have insurance. We're trying, we're we're requiring them, requiring to have insurance to protect themselves. I we don't do that with anything else. Yes, we have insurance for the Bartow building, but that's to protect us. And if you don't have insurance, I would say you're you you're not thinking straight. Is it a business? But for the town to enforce that? I don't understand that. Yeah. So it's to protect the customers. No, it's to protect everybody involved.
Can we stay on topic about the date?
That's fine. I'm just saying, okay, so my date would be fines um everything's and things are grandful. We've already gone over the grand five things, but we don't start enforcing the fines until March 2022 with this first full cycle of uh of registration.
Yeah, I I'm voting against that. I I don't know if I'd go all the way to March, but I I was going to suggest October, November 1 to get through this season to allow um, time to to meet the registration, but it's not, it's not a uh it's not a critical path item for me, but I just in in hearing how many people didn't know that this was a registration um uh ordinance coming forward that that may be operating short term rentals. So just trying to be mindful of the the window of how we're going to communicate that.
It's just Chip, are you making another motion to amend? He can't, he can't. Robert's rules require one of the five, isn't that true? That one of the five who voted for Dan.
We already did, did we, right at the beginning? I mean, I was everything on the 21 for the 30, March 31st, we already voted on that and we voted it down. So.
Yeah, you're not, you're not bound to Robert's rules legally either. So.
Okay, I don't know. I don't know what our rules are anymore. So.
I don't know if there are any in that in that regards, but you know.
We just had a vote five to two to amend the enforcement language to September 1 um in section 5E. Are we ready to move on? Or do we want to have another vote on that?
No.
Okay.
Um, can I suggest some language for the warning? That seems like there's consensus on as well to.
Where are you looking?
Warning before we find. So in addition to the the grace period, I think the other um suggestion was to add.
Where section, Dan?
Uh, sorry, um, I'm in Article 5E, the same paragraph.
Okay.
So 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 lines down from the top of the paragraph where it says each day that a violation continues. Uh, my suggestion would be to start that sentence by saying after an initial warning is issued, each day that a violation continues shall constitute a separate violation.
Second.
Uh, well, I I can I withdraw the motion? Because it's not, I think legally, it's not in the right spot. Because that talks about the the um each day that it doesn't talk about the initial violation itself.
Interpretation, Peter.
Yeah, can I withdraw a motion that's been seconded?
Yeah, but in no interpretation of whether that's a legal um motion to be made.
I mean, you can make motion to add anything wherever you want. I think Dan's saying he wants to withdraw it, though. So.
Doug, did you? So where do you want to put it, Dan?
Um, I mean, honestly, my preference is be just to direct the town manager to say, don't enforce this without issuing people warnings first because it's an enforcement issue that I think is under their jurisdiction. But um, it's confusing to me, honestly, to figure out where to put it. Um.
So.
Clear.
So just a suggestion for the violation of operating and or advertising a short term rental without a valid registration comma, then put in there what you'd like to see in terms of um, like, you know, for the violation, a a warning with a period of X days, you know, shall be issued. Or, you know, a written warning shall be issued to the property owner or however you want that to look. Then after that, um you know, the then period, the violator shall be penalized with a per day fine equal to the yearly registration fee um for the first defense occurring more than one week after the written warning mentioned above was issued or something like that.
Where where are you putting this?
Yeah, my my preference actually would be to table this specific issue because we've got until September 1st now to get something in there that we all like. And instead of trying to wordsmith something and then try and do it in a way that's got clarity and passes legal muster seems a little dangerous to do on the fly here. So I'd say I'm happy to commit to getting language back to the council to address the warning issue, but that we don't have to do it tonight.
So I'll withdraw my second.
Well, I I think if we're going to pass it tonight, it should be in there tonight.
There's no motion on the table now.
Well, we're, yeah, I I agree with you, Chip, um, except that this particular item is something that we do have some time to add. Um, and the public record here will show that we're intentionally not adding it this evening because we we don't have the language just right. Um, and we we still have another public hearing to get to this evening. So I'm mindful about moving us along here. Um, do we have some other um suggested changes or edits to the language? To the ordinance?
Uh, are we going to decide on the uh
F?
Board of Appeals issue?
Yeah, 5F. 5D and 5F have the alternate language that the council asked to be noticed in there.
Right.
So the proposed language is um is that the uh reports after code enforcement has determined that there is a uh a further review necessary um that that goes to and they let current language says to the town council. And the suggested alternative is that it goes to the manager for review and consideration.
Yes. And then and then any appeal from the town manager's decision goes to the Board of Appeals.
Um, I might, I I hate to introduce a third alternative, but I I might suggest that prior to it coming to the council um that we uh, that that's an awful lot of individual uh burden on this on the manager. And I'm I'm wondering if maybe there is a um committee convened by the count by the manager. That would be in lieu of the whole council.
I have to say, I agree with that. I I Peter works so hard and he doesn't even take weekends off. So anything to lighten his load is something I'd support.
What would you suggest, Peter?
Uh, I like the way it's written. It says town council, but I don't think I'm going to win that one. So um, uh, yeah, to get I I, you know, I didn't even think of anything like what John's saying. John, I wish he, I wish that we had had that 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 thought floating around earlier this last week or something because that's a really good one. Um, you know, a a a review committee or, you know, a three person panel with, you know, I'm glad to serve on it, you know, a a member of the public, myself and a town councillor or something. I don't know, you know.
It's still a lot of work on you, Peter, though. I mean, could the committee report to you? And I think that would satisfy so many of the concerns that have been brought up tonight. I mean, it would really show that we're keeping, you know, we're keeping close tabs on this. This isn't something that we're doing to get against the the success of the Airbnbs. And it would really show that we're working together as a community.
What about the ordinance committee? And just have them be the the body?
Yes, that's a good suggestion. Ordinance committee of good play score.
They have intimate knowledge of it?
For what it's worth. That's only now.
Yeah, exactly. Um, I I'm actually okay with it as written where it comes right back to the town council because I think our meetings aren't long enough and we should add more things to them. Seriously, um, especially in this first year, because it's something that obviously there's a lot of you know, discussion about, a lot of opinions about, a lot of thoughts around. Um, I'm hoping that there aren't a lot of these that are coming up. I'm hoping it's one or two or hopefully none. And it might be interesting for us to be aware of the, this is what's come up in the first year. And then we can always change it when we do that, that when you review saying, hey, we don't really want to have to deal with this stuff. Let's let the manager do it or come up with a review committee.
So I'm I'm totally open to to taking the role, the alternate role in there. Um, I mean, even I would even love the idea maybe changing it to that after we determine it's not a huge deal. Um, because I I agree with what Dan's saying. I think, you know, like a vitueller's license or something like that, you know, how often do those come for the what? We've got like one in five years that comes up for a hearing before the town council or something like that, you know, that can't be resolved at the staff level. I think that you know, and if it if it proves that it's not a huge time burden to address Council Whitney's concerns, then I'll be glad to take it. You know, that's not, that's not a problem. Um, I I I think with with the public hearing, the ability to present, you know, this gets to the public comments that were made, like, how does the decision to revoke that get made? You know, you've got it is a little bit like a trial proceeding. You know, you just do a public hearing, just like in front of the council, you present the evidence and you say, hey, are they breaking the ordinance or not? You know? I can make that decision the same as you guys can make that decision. It's whoever, wherever you want it to be. It's a political decision. And there's a whole appeal process built into it afterwards, if I'm wrong or if you're wrong. So.
Just a quick suggestion is let's keep it. Just a quick suggestion is let's keep it the way it is. We'll highlight this, this as a viewpoint for the ordinance committee at the end of the first year. Uh, just so that we have the full discussion before we make a motion. I, I guess. The way I see a. Complaint coming forward would be that neighbors in a, in a community where a short term rental exists would file enough complaints. That the code enforcement officer would bring it to the attention of whom, whoever we decide. And I'll just say as, as one counselor, I, I didn't run. Uh, to sit in judgment on complaints by neighbors about anything in the town, and I can't imagine. Um, sitting in a, a, a session where people, um. Bring these complaints forward, um, and we have to decide who's telling the truth in a public hearing with, with nothing more than that in front of us. It's, it's just, it's not, I don't think we're suited to do that. Um, and I, I don't want to do it and I, I will not vote for this if the council does that, but that's okay. I'm just one vote. But I think it's really inappropriate for us, and I think the town manager, no matter how much work he has to do. Um, I, I get it. I, I'm not dismissing that. But he is in a position to sort of cut through all the political baloney and figure out what facts are facts and not have to deal with. Things presented one night in the middle of, of a very busy budget season or whatever a season it is where we have to deal with it. So I, I really think we should think hard about before we take on that responsibility. Um, it just seems wrong to me.
And, and I guess I hate myself for doing this, but I have to sit through your meetings anyway. So either I'm going to listen to it by myself and make a decision, or I'm going to listen to all seven of you, listen to it and then make a decision, so. Still takes up the same amount of my time. So there you go. I guess that's your answer.
So we need a motion here then. In article five. D. That the wording that's highlighted instead of town council, we will use the alternative town manager in all places. And then the alternative, any decision by the town manager described above may be appealed to the Board of Appeals using the process outlined in section six oh one of the Freeport zoning ordinance, chapter twenty one.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the second, yeah, that's right. The, the third part, any decision doesn't replace any language. So. Town manager replaces council, town manager replaces council, and then any decision of the town manager is added that section alternative language. Which I think is the motion that Doug just made, which is correct, if that's the intent.
We prefer that or having a small group of committee, including Peter, that could have a citizen and a town counselor or some such other thing. Do we want it to be just one person?
I, I don't think so. Because I think that's, um, to, to Ed's point, I think that it, it could become a very difficult emotional decision, and that's even more. Burdensome if it's a single person making that decision, but. Which is why I suggested a, a committee impaneled by the town manager so that there's. You know, a, a reporting mechanism that, to, the manager is aware of, but that the manager is not participating.
Do you have a panel of peers?
I think that, I mean, Peter can do the extra investigation and can really look into it, you know, so I think that that's very beneficial. I just wonder would it ease the burden of having him have to make the decision by himself if there were two other people, Peter saying no?
Oh, it's, it's, I'm still gonna have to make a decision if I'm one of three and go on record with it, so. It doesn't give me heartburn.
Yeah, Peter's the professional. He's the guy we hire to do these hard things.
If you've ever, if you've ever done a fair hearing for general assistance, that's the most heart wrenching thing that you can ever do to decide somebody's application for financial assistance or something like that. This is. Easy compared to that, so.
Then I believe there's a motion that's been seconded.
Thank you. Time for a vote.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele? Uh, unmute Jake, we didn't hear that. We got to hear it on the record.
Yes, sorry.
Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
Counselor Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes.
And the chair votes no. I still think Peter needs a committee, but that's okay. Um, okay, so where we are going to amend. Section, uh, five D to replace, um, the bold. Town manager and the, and the third clause, uh, any decision of the town manager as it's presented, the bold will replace, um, the sentence prior to it.
And section F, you're going to need a similar.
Five F. We, I move that, uh, we use the alternative wording. Instead of town council, it will be Board of Appeals. In all three locations.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
Counselor Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay. So, uh, that covers those amendments. Are there any others?
I got one. I think I know the answer, but I'd like to see, make a motion that section. Article four. Section eight, H, or hotel. This is the insurance. I don't know. I, I understand what the reasons are, but I don't agree with them, and I think it should be stricken from. This amendment. We don't require it for any other. Any other business in town.
Dan, Dan, would you or Doug explain why it's in here?
Yeah, I'll reiterate that the comments I made at, at opening that, um. Any other lodging establishment typically has a loan where the lender is going to require them to have liability insurance. So somebody comes to stay in their property and they get injured and they get sued. Um, the, the, the visitor, the, the person who's staying is going to be compensated for their injury. Uh, this is sort of a new style of business that's grown up in the last, within the last decade. Um, and. It, many homeowner policies won't cover these kinds of injuries if you're using your home for a commercial use, if you're renting it out. However, Airbnb and VRBO are, you know, they're aware of this, so they say if you rent through us, through Airbnb and VRBO, to my knowledge. Um, they'll offer, I think it's a million dollar liability policy. And it says if somebody's renting your place and they get hurt, we'll, we'll cover it through our insurance policy that you have access to as a participant in our platform. So anybody who rents through Airbnb and VR, VRBO would be covered, uh, and they don't need to do anything additional, again, to my knowledge. Um, this is really, the, the small number of people this would impact are the people who are renting their house, not through a platform. But are kind of creating a commercial enterprise in their home. And what it's doing is directing them to say, you gotta call your, your homeowner's insurance company and. Talk to them about how to ensure people who are coming to stay in your house for money and making sure that they're covered if something awful were to happen to them while they're in your house.
Also, uh, when you notify your insurance company that you're going to be doing short term rentals, they will do a rider for you, but it's going to cost. You more money because they recognize there's a risk involved, a greater risk. And so that's why, uh. If you're renting short term and you don't have it, that rider. You're liable to be denied any claim. So it's. No, I, I rent, when I did it and I no longer do, and I'm, my listing is off the books. But I went through VRBO and went through their liability program. Does anybody know how much it would cost a short term renter to get a rider on his homeowners if he wasn't on a rental platform?
No.
Dan, do you?
I, I, I don't know. I, um, one other thing I found in, in researching this, though, that's probably worth mentioning is I, I had some. Reservations about this after people have raised the issues that, that have been raised tonight. Um, and then I found that Massachusetts, within the last couple of years, implemented, basically implemented this on a statewide level. They said anybody in the state of Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, who's renting out, uh, a short term rental must have a million dollar liability policy in place. Um, so that kind of reinforced my commitment to say, yeah, I think there's legitimacy to having it in here.
Well, then maybe I'll change it. Let's take the million, you must have liability insurance instead of saying a million dollars. I, I just think that's. You're foolish if you don't have it. I think, but that's your responsibility. That's not the state's responsibility to force that. Um, so you must have proof of liability. Instead of saying you gotta have not less than one million. Because what if all your assets are not more than a million dollars? You're not going to have, you know, why, why would I want to pay for more than what I need, right?
Well, because then you go bankrupt if somebody gets injured.
Well, that's the, that's, that's the risk they take for not having insurance.
Do you want to propose a succinct motion?
Sure.
Can I, can I just, I, I just got a text from somebody who's in the audience who seems to know something about this, and. The, the text I got was that a million dollar umbrella on a homeowner's, uh, costs three hundred dollars a year.
But doesn't that, is that based on your credit rating and everything else?
No, it's based on the risk. Any of that has nothing to do with your credit rating. That has to do with the ri, the risk that the company assesses, uh, is involved in having short term renters.
Probably based more on the location in Freeport than on your credit rating, right?
No, it'd just be risk, I think, you know, what's the risk that, what is the, what do the statistics show? The, the, uh, experiences with people in short term rentals, and then they'll do a risk assessment and it's, and assess a, a, uh. Premium. I'm still getting texts.
Yeah.
Um, that quote came from, uh, somebody today who was looking into a short term rental and asked that question.
Okay. Then I'll strike my motion, although we're telling people what, I just have heartburn with that. I'll withdraw my motion.
Hey, any other amendments or suggested changes to the language? We're getting ready to vote on the entire ordinance right now?
Then this Dan makes it. To be it ordained.
All right, Mr. Chair, my, I offer, uh, be it ordained. That chapter sixty one, short term residential rental registration ordinance be enacted.
Second, as amended.
As amended, thank you.
Second. Uh, let me just clarify, we don't have to vote. We voted individually on the amendments, so we can now vote on the entire document as amended. Just to want to make sure we, I dropped the ball on that two weeks ago.
One note, one, one up or down vote is for everything incorporated, everybody voted on.
All right, so I'm going to put that off to the side. We're going to take the vote as amended, chapter sixty one, Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley?
Yes, and if I, if I may, uh. This has been a really intense rewriting of something that started, um, for me a couple of months ago. And at times it, it was really hard, um, but I have come to appreciate, um, the process and think that we have reached a good result. And the reason I, I can say that is the people in my district. Who had really strong views about teeth and punishing people in short term rentals. Um, support this version of the ordinance. So I think we've done a good job and I'm proud to have been part of it. Thank you.
Counselor Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Uh, no, I, I still think it's too restrictive and another. Ordinance that says, oh, come to Freeport, do business, but don't do business, but. I appreciate all the work that has gone into it, and there's a lot of it, and it's gotten much better, but I still think there's work to do.
Counselor Riley?
Yes, and we will review it.
And the chair votes yes. Six to one, the motion carries. Thank you for lively conversation and anybody listening, thank you for your public participation this evening. It is nine forty five. We have quite a bit left to do this evening. I would love to be able to say, I'm not sure we're going to get to it all, but we have to get to it all because, uh, the items here requiring action. Our next item. Uh, Counselor Daniele, could you please read item number six, six, two, one?
Absolutely. To consider action relative to setting a public hearing to discuss proposed amendments to the village commercial districts, Freeport zoning ordinance, public hearing, I motion to open the public hearing.
All right, we're going to take a vote to open the public hearing on changes to the village commercial district zoning language, Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Did it get seconded?
I seconded.
Yes.
Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
Counselor Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We're opening the public hearing. Um, uh, this is a chance for the public to, um, step forward and make your, uh, opinions and views and questions known. The way it works, if you weren't here earlier for the prior public hearing, um, is to use the raise hand feature. The manager will then see that on the screen, uh, and move you over to the panelist portion of the Zoom platform, and you'll be able to address the council in live time. Um, so this is a public hearing on. Proposed changes in, uh, the village commercial districts of our zoning ordinance. Uh, we had an introduction and explanation of this at our April sixth meeting, and the materials were available, uh, in the packet. Um, and, uh, this will be a chance for the public to comment on these changes. Um, I apologize for the late hour of the public participation, but, um. Uh, we have a full agenda this evening. Do we have any members of the public who would wish to address? The council during the public hearing on proposed amendments to the village commercial districts in our land use ordinance? Again, you would use the raise hand feature, um, indicate that your, next to your name would show a, a, a little picture of a hand, and we would then move you over. Uh, you have to initiate the button and we'll then move you over and, uh, take yourself off mute. And you'll be able to address the council in live time. I know sometimes it can be a little intimidating. I just want to make sure if anyone's here, uh, we still have, uh, thirty people in the audience. Uh, if anyone's here to participate in the public hearing. On proposed amendments to the village commercial districts, this is your chance to speak. I'm not seeing any hands go up. So, uh, Counselor Daniele, uh, will take a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, we have to vote, Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes.
Counsel Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Um, Caroline, we've already had a conversation about these changes and you provided a very nice summary at our last meeting. Uh, very briefly, before we move to vote on this, um, did you want to highlight anything or go over very briefly the? Uh, I know we've got, uh, an attachment in our council packet this evening that's, uh, five or six pages long, so I'm not asking you to go through that, but. Uh, if you could just highlight what the purpose is, uh, and why we're looking at this this evening for, for vote.
Sure. So I'll just give you a verbal, and then if you want the pretty slides, I'm happy to put those up again for you, but I know you have some time constraints. Um, so this was a conversation that was initiated by FDCC. They came to the planning board back in December and identified some. What they hear are barriers to some residential development in the downtown area, village commercial one, two, three, and four. So the things that were discussed were. One, in the village commercial one for multifamily or where we have mixed use, it would. Reduce the land per dwelling unit requirement from two thousand square feet per unit down to zero. It wouldn't change any minimum lot sizes. It would just get rid of. It would just get rid of that requirement. Things like setbacks and maximum coverage would all stay in place. The second thing was building height. The proposed change was to tweak the wording to go from thirty-five feet to change it to read three stories with the maximum of forty-five feet. That was probably the thing they discussed most at the planning board public hearing. Um they ended up taking that height change out of the village commercial four, which is over near the Hilton Garden Inn, based upon feedback from neighbors. You did receive a letter, I believe it was yesterday, um, from Adam Troydell, a resident who actually also serves on project review with some concerns about the height. Um, it says forty-five feet and you know, we do have design review and in some cases, the standards of the Freeport Village overlay district that come into play. But some of that is about compatibility and scale. And so it's great if somebody comes in with the building that's forty-five feet and it's next to a high building and it's compatible. But it could create, I think, some unique situations if there's a one-story building on either side. Um, you know, the project review board could deem something not compatible. And so that's just something to be aware of. We're putting a number in there. Um, it doesn't change setbacks or any other requirements. They, they did talk about that, but just be aware that design review could come into play for some of that. And then finally, the additional thing would be adding the use of mixed-use development to all districts. Um, in the village commercial one in the heart of the downtown, essentially, we allow that today, but we say that the residential units can't be on the first floor. They would have to be on the upper story. In this case, by changing it to allowing mixed-use development, you're eliminating the requirement that when you have a commercial and residential use that the require, uh, that unit can't be on the first floor. That's a quick snapshot. I'm happy to answer questions. I have slides and maps if you want to see that. Um otherwise, that's snapshot.
Thank you, Caroline. I appreciate your brevity uh, at this hour of the meeting. Um, questions for Caroline? Counselor Bradley?
Caroline, what does the thirty-five feet or forty-five feet allow that um isn't allowed with thirty-five feet? I mean, what, what kind of use would we do, were we trying to encourage?
I think the, the goal was to go to three stories and give some flexibility. We recently did that in another zoning district and then everyone was like, why is the building so high? And there was, the building was so high because it said three stories and there was no number to give you a max. So the goal is that that would allow for some additional height to conform to our standards, thereby hoping that people could get additional units and make projects more affordable and more attainable in the village.
So it's, it's to allow or to encourage residential development in the third floor?
Yeah, that's the goal of it.
Thanks.
Other questions for Caroline? All right, um are we ready to move forward with the vote? We just closed the public hearing.
Um, I, I can make a brief comment, um
Sure.
which is that uh, there are a number of conversations I had around what, what Caroline had pointed out being the what we're entrusting to the project review board in terms of interpreting a very complex set of ordinances uh, and a lot of subjectivity, which makes their job very difficult, but on the other hand, it kind of in the spirit of saying, well, if you can get four out of seven reasonable people to agree with a certain uh development, as long as it meets the, the standards we're trying to enforce, then, then you can go ahead. But they also have the power to deny that despite the fact that we're allowing a third story if they don't deem it in harmony with the surrounding buildings, they could vote it down. So anyway, my point is that I don't think we pass this and we're done. And we say, we wash our hands and say, all right, this is it. I think this is, you know, highlights the fact that we need to do some work in planning and project review and design review and simplify and really kind of um get those boards together and, and have some of us provide some input uh, to simplify things and make it more clear. So I, I don't want to, I'm, I'm gonna support passing this tonight, but I don't want to imply that we're done with this. Um, I think this is the first in in a longer process, but I do think the, the spirit of this is in the right direction. I, I like where it's going. Um so yeah, I, I don't want to hold it up.
Counselor Daniele, could you please read the be it ordained?
Absolutely. Be it ordained that the following amendments to the Freeport zoning ordinance be enacted. One, adding mixed-use development as a permanent permitted use subject to site plan review in section four thirteen, village commercial section four fourteen, village commercial two, VC two, section four fifteen, village commercial three, VC and section four sixteen, village commercial four, VC four. Changing the map to, changing the maximum building height to up to three stories with a maximum height of forty-five feet in section four thirteen, village commercial VC one, section four fourteen, village commercial two, VC two, and section four fifteen, village commercial three, VC three, three, changing the minimum land area per dwelling unit requirement to zero in section four thirteen, village commercial VC one.
Second.
Thank you. Um thanks for the summary, Caroline. Uh, we'll go ahead and take the vote on this action item. Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
Counselor Riley?
Yes.
Counselor Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yep.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries. Um, the next item on our agenda is uh, something that we have seen several times before. It's a continuation of uh, an emergency uh, ordinance change and a relaxation of a whole bunch of standards. I'm not gonna make anybody read that. Um, it's a continuation of um the emergency allowance in response to the COVID pandemic um, that regards, it relates to the use of public property and business operations in the downtown. We have uh, approved this uh, at least four times before, so it's not anything new. It's just a continuation based on dates. Peter?
Well, staff has been discussing this and this is not a decision to be made tonight, but uh, we're throwing it out there that we need to start thinking about whether these changes become permanent. Um, because like I said, you don't even need to discuss this tonight, but I think the next time around, we've got two months of this comes up again. And um, if we want to make any of these changes permanent, we're gonna need to start directing Caroline to bring these to the planning board for public hearing and things like that. So just throwing that out there for you know, chewing on and, and so you guys can give us feedback in the near future.
Okay, uh, Counselor Whitney, could you please read just the opening paragraph of item number six-seven-two-one?
Consider action relative to reenactment of Freeport's ordinance, chapter sixty, emergency order, temporary suspension of certain ordinance standards to safely accommodate expanded outdoor business activity due to the COVID nineteen to be effective April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one until June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one pursuant to the Freeport Town Charter, section two-point-one-four, emergency ordinance. Be it ordained that the chapter sixty, emergency ordinance, temporary suspension of certain uh, the certain ordinance standards to safely accommodate expanded outdoor business activities due to COVID nineteen to be effective April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one until June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one pursuant to the Freeport Chapter, Section two-point-one, emergency ordinance be reenacted without amendments.
And there's a substantial amount of language that is specifically affected by this action, which we have again passed before. Any further questions or comments on this activity? Take note that the manager is recommending that we possibly consider making some of these changes in the future more permanent.
Second.
All right, we're ready to vote. Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes.
Counsel Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right, pursuant to um, at least one other item earlier, um, dispatched on our agenda, which is the short-term rental ordinance. We have a fee schedule that we're amending. Um, Counselor Lawrence, could you please read item number six-eight-two-one?
Yes. Consider uh, action relative to amending a town of Freeport fee schedule, be it ordained that the fee schedule be adopted as amended to add short-term residential rental registration fee and late fee.
Second.
All right, we have a fee schedule that was included in our packet, which adds uh, those particular activities uh, which we have talked about extensively. Um, is there any further discussion we want to have on uh, on the fees that were uh, proposed in the amended fee schedule?
I have a question. How, how was it determined it was a hundred dollars?
It's uh, based on what we've discovered with surrounding towns. It's a fair and equitable fee that's being charged uh, in most of the communities. Some communities are higher, very few are lower.
Okay, but in relative to other businesses? Like twenty, was it twenty-five bucks for, what was it? In relation to other businesses, I mean, could we make it seventy-five? Can I make a motion to say we make it seventy-five instead of all?
Chip, I, I think the, um, the, one of the concerns is that if we make it too low, then it's almost economically incentivized. We're economically incentivizing people to say, I'd rather not register and pay the fine because I can charge two-hundred-and-fifty bucks a night and then uh, the, the, pay the the, the fines which are related to the fees right now. So we're saying fine is, is one times the fee or three times the fee. So at some point, the fee becomes so low that I'd just rather pay the fines and, and, and not register. It's easier. I rented out for two-hundred bucks a night. The fine for not renting out for two-hundred bucks a night should be higher than two-hundred bucks a night.
Okay, I'll remove the motion or withdraw.
Um, related to that, though, I did have a question. I'm trying to find on the listing here. Uh, oh, there it is. So uh, Chip, it's just a comparison. The Victular's license is a hundred and thirty-five dollars. Uh, if it's with alcohol, it's a hundred and fifty dollars. So that's a, that's a hospitality industry-related
Yeah.
uh, fee structure for uh, restaurants and folks serving prepared food.
Okay.
Maybe we need to increase that twenty-five dollar fee someplace.
Um any other comments or suggestions on um, the uh, motion to adopt the amended fee schedule?
Let's move.
All right, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes.
Counsel Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Item is uh, enacted. Uh, our next item is uh, related to setting a public hearing, not having a public hearing, but setting a public hearing for a new liquor license for Sunrise Cafe LLC located at four seventy-five U.S. Route One. Uh, Counselor Bradley, could you please read the be it ordered and the be it further ordered?
Uh be it ordered that a public hearing be set for May fourth, twenty-twenty-one to consider a liquor license request for June and Timothy Chambers doing business at Sunrise Cafe LLC located at four seventy-five U.S. Route One. Be it further ordered that copies be distributed equally between the town clerk's office, the town manager's office, and the Freeport Community Library for inspection by citizens during normal business hours and the notice placed on Freeport's local cable channel three and the town's website.
Second.
Okay, so um, a rather ordinary thing, but we, we do have to have a public hearing when we're renewing the liquor license. We're setting this for May fourth, which is our next meeting, surprisingly, just next week. Um, uh, any other questions about setting this public hearing for next week? Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote on it. Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Now, Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes.
Counsel Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we've set a public hearing for May fourth. Um, our uh next item is uh, approval of a liquor license extension for Main Beer Company, uh, Counselor uh I think we've already gone around the horn. So uh, Counsel Riley, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that a request for extension of lic- of license on premises for Main Beer Company LLC at five twenty-five U.S. Route One be approved?
Second.
All right, we had some uh, information in the application um, included in our council packet. Any conversation or questions about this action item before we take a vote?
My question is, what do, why does this not require a public hearing if the other one did? This is an extension.
Good, good question. Um, that comes up every single time. We've got two of these back-to-back that fall into this category. New liquor licenses and always require um a public hearing, but the renewals, this is an extension. I think it's of their outdoor their service. Uh, they've expanded their original license. So anything that's a modification or a renewal of an existing license does not require a public hearing, but uh, you've got, anytime you do a new one, you're gonna have to do a public hearing.
So it doesn't matter how much more or increased seating or anything. It's just, it's, that's an extension.
Yeah, it's i- in the ordinance, in our ordinance, it specifically lays out that in this case that they've got to have a um that it's got to be a public hearing for a new license. Um it just gets the new license issuance that calls for the public hearing.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other further questions. We'll take a vote on item number seven-zero-dash-two-one. Counselor Pilch?
Yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counsel Bradley?
Yes.
Counsel Riley?
Yes.
Counsel Whitney?
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Uh, our next item, um, which is a, a big one on our agenda, but we've been talking about it for quite a while, is item number seven-one-dash-two-one. Action relative to adopting the FY twenty-two capital budget. Uh, Counselor Daniele, could you please read the be it ordered and then we'll have a conversation?
Absolutely. I just wanted to say real fast, though, that at the end of this, we have a discussion with Chrissy Adam, I'm not gonna say the name correctly. Do we want to move that forward just so that person doesn't have to wait until the very, very end of tonight? Because it might be really late. Because this is an hour, so I didn't know if that would be appropriate.
Uh, well, and, and Peter and I talked about that exact thing, Jake, and I appreciate your concern. It was my concern as well. Um, we, we generally don't take items of other business until we finish voting on all the action items. Um, I don't believe we're gonna spend an hour on this item. Um, at least that's my hope. Uh, and the rest of these are gonna be very quick um, dispatched in terms of just uh, some routine business. So I'm hoping that um, after this discussion, it'll just be a few minutes before we get to other business and um, Chrissy uh, from NRCM will be first on that list.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, so be it ordered that the proposed capital program for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two be approved as amended.
Second.
Okay, so um, we've been working through our capital budget plan. We've had uh, several presentations from uh, our highly skilled finance manager, Jessica Malloy, as well as good conversation about all of the departments. We've heard from uh, the manager about different activities and, and realignments in that um, capital budget. And we've made a few uh, minor amendments to it as it's come through its process, but it is before us this evening for adoption. And uh, while we already had a public hearing on it at our last meeting on April sixth, um, we do have one more chance here to talk about it. I'm not inviting that conversation to be extensive, given the late hour, um, but if we, we do actually have a chance here to talk about this item before we actually adopt it. Um, and um, uh, so we'll, we'll open it up for a few comments. Counsel Riley?
Are there any modifications or changes in this?
Uh, I don't believe there are any since the public hearing.
That will make it so quickly.
Counselor Daniele?
Uh, the manager mentioned that we were gonna have a five percent increase potentially going forward. Can you tell me what the dollar amount of that is and is there anything that we can take out of this to therefore reduce that number? What I'm saying is this costs money. So is there anything that we could take out? Like, you know, like what, what is that five percent? Is that a million dollars? Is it half a million dollars?
You're on mute, Peter.
There's a reason why he's on mute.
Yeah, my space bar apparently doesn't work anymore. Sorry about that. I thought I was answering your question. Uh, two, two-hundred-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars um, is the range we're talking about. Um generally, so you can hmm you could use reserve funds, you could transfer things to offset the general fund. I, I don't recommend that, but there are ways you could do that. But I wouldn't say that probably anything that you cut out of the the capital program would automatically the capital program would automatically make more money available for the general fund. I can't think of it. Jessica, can you think of any? I don't want to just speak generally because I might be screwing something up by missing like a little thing over here or something.
No, I believe you're correct.
Yeah, I think that that, I think that that's accurate. I'm just running my mind through everything that's on there. Now, keep in mind, everything that's in this capital program, you vote on again at the end of the operating budget. So maybe I should explain that, that, that what we're voting on tonight is the capital program, the five-year planning document. Year one of the capital program goes on your agenda on the second meeting in June to be approved as the first of next year's capital budget. So you appropriate, if you look through that document, which I've got over here, if you look through that document for the capital program, all of the year one lines in each of those different funds get appropriated by you in that'll be the proposal in front of you in July, or sorry, in June again. Yeah, thanks. That's, that's very important, actually.
Counsel Bradley.
To Jake's point, we, we had a really truncated discussion about reserve accounts because the council wasn't interested, I thought, in, in discussing how you might reduce the amount in reserve accounts. But if we got, as Jake is suggesting, concerned about the amount of increase in the budget, is there a time later on in the process, we could talk about how reserve, reducing the amount we're putting in reserve could offset that, that tax increase?
Yes, you would want to talk about that as part of the revenue discussion during the operating budget discussion. So you'd, you'd want to say transfer in from this fund or in from this fund into the general fund in next year's budget to offset the expenditures.
And that's part of the normal process we'll go through.
Yep, and there, you'll see that there is an amount in there, transfer, use general, use fund balance for, to offset taxes. So that's one typical source of how we would do that. Yep.
And, and would in the first instance, would that be a recommendation you would consider making?
Yes, it's already, it's, and there's, there's fund balance used in the budget right now. Yeah.
Counsel Lawrence.
Is that five percent in a year or is that five percent over the life of this capital program?
That five percent number doesn't have anything to do with the capital program in front of you. That's that, that comment was about operating budget that's going to be dropping in front of you on and even if you went to zero percent on the operating budget, the four percent increase from the RSU goes down to three percent. So that's, keep in mind that you, that we average all three of the different governmental units.
So it's not just five percent for the town, it's
It is, but it's, it's seven percent for transit, five percent for town, four percent for RSU, three percent and averages out to like four and a half percent on the, I, I, I'm just throwing out random numbers because we haven't
I, I just want to clarify that those percentages that Peter was just reciting are predicted percentage budget increases. So five percent from one budget and three percent from another are not the same when they're a percentage of a totally different sized budget.
Right.
Keep in mind that our, our overall budget for, for the taxpayers in the community is made up of the county, the RSU, and our operating budget. Jessica, roughly, what are those ratios?
You mean as far as what percent they make up of the mill rate? The town is like twenty-two percent. The RSU makes up seventy-four percent. In the county is like five percent.
So, you know, a percentage of, of something that's seventy-four percent of our overall mill rate is a lot bigger dollar amount than a percentage of our town budget, which is only twenty-three percent of the mill rate. That's the point I was just trying to highlight. So they're not directly comparable. But we'll have, we'll have a good illustration of that when we get to adopting the full budget for the next fiscal year, which is the last item remaining for discussion is the operating budget of the town government. So the, the item that is in front of us right now is the capital program, which includes the predicted expenses for capital improvements over the next five years, as well as the capital expenditures proposed for this fiscal year coming of twenty-two.
So to, so to more accurately answer Ed's question, I think if there, a good way to think about it is if there is a crisis that happened between when you adopt this document and you say, these are our priorities for next year, this is our planning document. And then, you know, well, like what happened last year, COVID happened. And, you know, if, if there's a change, like something like that scale or even worse, you know, a, a bridge collapses and we need to spend four million dollars to rebuild a bridge that we weren't planning on. You, you, you're not committing to anything by adopting this document, other than saying, this is our plan for the next five years of, of what we're going to put in. When you actually take the vote in June on the actual appropriation for the next year's capital budget, that's when you're making the legal authority to spend, the decision to spend that money. So up until that point, you know, if something happens between now and the next two months that totally changes our priorities, we could scrap everything in this plan and say, hey, instead of spending, you know, all of these different items, we're going to spend one point two million dollars on this one project that we need to fix. That's a decision that the council can make up until, you know, at any point, really.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was a good question. It, it comes up quite a bit.
All right, any other comments about the capital program that we're adopting this evening? Keep in mind that we'll have a chance to actually vote on it for, for final in June.
Could, could I ask a question, John?
Yes.
So it's no secret that I'm very interested in the TIF request. And as part of this process going, coming forward to this meeting, people have written some very compelling statements in support of the TIF. And I don't want to go through the process of reading them all now, but I think I, I would like to know if, if there's a way I could make them part of this record.
I, I believe you could submit those to Sharon and they can become a part of the minutes of the meeting that the, those comments were, were submitted in reference to this item.
Okay, I would like to do that because some of them were very thoughtful and, and very helpful.
Sure.
Thanks.
We can also post them with, Ed, if you've got, if you get us electronic versions of those, we can post those with the meeting materials for this meeting on the website.
That'd be great.
So they're there when someone looks back five years from now to this meeting date or something like that.
Okay. So
I'll do that.
Let's go ahead and take a vote on the capital program for FY twenty-two. Counselor Pilch.
Yes.
Counselor Daniele.
Yes.
Counselor Bradley.
Yes.
Counselor Whitney.
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence.
Yes.
Counsel Riley.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you very much for all of that work, Jessica and Peter, in putting that, and your, and your staff, the departments putting that together. It's well thought out. And again, amazing that it's covered entirely by a good prudent fiduciary responsibility that we're able to fund it all by reserves. Our next item is item number seven two dash two one. To consider action relative to the annual appointment of Nicholas Adams as Freeport Code Enforcement Officer, Electrical Inspector, Plumbing Inspector, and Building Inspector. Counselor Whitney, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that the annual appointment of Nicholas Adams as Freeport Code Enforcer, Electrical Inspector, and Plumbing Inspector effective through June thirtieth, twenty twenty be confirmed. Be it further ordered that the annual appointment of Nicholas Adams as Freeport Building Inspector effective through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two be confirmed.
Second.
All right, this is a rather ordinary function here that it requires from our charter that the code officer be appointed as, as that, those specific official listings. Any questions before we take the vote?
It doesn't require that he be appointed as those things. We could appoint somebody else's, just to clarify. We could appoint somebody else's those things if there were somebody to do those jobs, the plumbing and electrical, just FYI.
Okay. Counsel Bradley.
I guess my question is, is, is this a, a time at which members of the council would discuss performance or public comments about the performance, or is it just a, a, a function vote?
I would suggest those things would be discussed in executive session with the employee present if you had a reason to discuss them.
Okay.
At the council, or you can talk with me. You know, I'm not trying to say you can't discuss those, or you can have a conversation with me and we can, you know, take that to the staff level.
Okay.
Whatever you're comfortable, counselor.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll take a vote on item number seven two dash two one. Counsel Pilch.
Yes.
Counselor Daniele.
Yes.
Counsel Bradley.
Yes.
Counsel Whitney.
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence.
Yes.
Counsel Riley.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right, our next item is item number seven three dash two one. It's related to our town meeting schedule. At our last meeting, we talked about re, realigning our council workshop to a point later in the year when we might have a chance at gathering in person for a district workshop. So this action this evening makes that so. Counselor Pilch, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that the meeting schedule be amended by rescheduling the April twenty-seventh district workshop to October fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
And I don't believe we've actually specified which district is covered by this, but Peter, when do we set what district is actually covered by this district workshop schedule?
Whenever you're comfortable with that, whenever the council wants to make that decision. So I think you've got two in the fall now, right?
Yeah. Yeah, the dates as amended now would be September twenty-one and October fifth. So we do two of them on one evening and two of them on another, or?
Yep, you could, you could do it right now if you want to sign up one and three and one, or one and two and however you want to do it.
Okay, well, it makes sense to actually give people as much notice as possible. So let's go ahead and, and set the district workshop on October fifth. The, the one that we're talking about here, that we designate that one for District Three and Four. And we simply do, simply do them in order, three and four. On the second date, we do one and two on the first date. So I think we actually need to amend the be it ordered. Counselor Pilch, could you potentially reread the be it ordered with the amendment? We'll take a vote on that.
I can try and do that. So be it ordered that the meeting schedule be amended by rescheduling the April twenty-seventh district workshop to October fifth, twenty twenty-one and make that a District Three and Four District Workshop. In addition, the district workshop scheduled for September twenty-first shall be a District One and Two workshop.
Second.
Okay, we've got an amended motion here to vote on for changing our schedule. We'll go ahead and take the vote. Counselor Pilch.
Yes.
Counselor Daniele.
Yes.
Counsel Bradley.
Yes.
Counsel Whitney.
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence.
Yes.
Counsel Riley.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Do we need to vote on the, adopting the amendment and then adopting the the amended?
That's correct. What we just voted on was, was the amended language.
Got it.
Now, now we're going to adopt the original motion that Dan read, which was to amend the schedule.
As amended.
All right. So Dan, would you mind just reading that again?
Uh, yeah, so I, I think as amended, it reads something like it ordered that the meeting schedule be amended by rescheduling the April twenty-seventh district workshop to October fifth, twenty twenty-one and making it a workshop for Districts Three and Four. And in addition, the meeting scheduled for September twenty-first shall be a workshop for Districts One and Two.
Second.
Okay, that sounds an awful lot like what we just voted.
Yeah, my amendment was a little too, too broad.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we'll take that vote and then we'll be done with voting on council district workshops. Counsel Pilch.
Yes.
Counselor Daniele.
Yes.
Counsel Whitney.
Yes.
Counsel Bradley.
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence.
Yes.
Counsel Riley.
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Okay, we have now officially amended our schedule. Our last action item is action relative to signing the RSU five budget validation election warrant scheduled for June eighth, twenty twenty-one. Peter, why do we take action on this before we actually have the warrant? All right, well, the, the draft warrant was in our package, but the, the warrant hasn't been approved yet, but this is the authorization for us to go ahead and sign it?
Uh, I think it has been approved. Their, their warrant for their election, yeah.
Sorry, the warrant has, but the actual vote on the, so what we're, what we're approving is that we're endorsing this warrant to go before the voters.
You're, you're, you're calling the election, actually, is what you're doing. So they, they send the warrant to the town and then you, as the governing body of the town, then call the election for the school district.
Right. Thank you for that clarification. So everybody got that, what we're voting on here?
Does, does this include any assessment on our part of the amounts being appropriated by or, or requested by the RSU? Or is this another function vote for us?
This is procedural only. And to answer the question, maybe that might be coming, that was asked by a former town councilor. What happens if we don't do this, then they, either the Department of Education or the RSU comes after us legally and we, we probably get convicted of all kinds of stuff in court for screwing up something that we're just supposed to do. The statute just says they forward it to us, we sign the warrant, it goes up. They don't have the, I think it's something about the legal, you know, the way that the calling of the town meeting essentially happens. They have to get all three towns. They don't have, you know, governmental meeting calling power, the same way that the three towns do. So they actually send out a warrant to all three towns and then it's the responsibility of the boards in each of the three towns to, to endorse the warrant and essentially call their meeting.
So all we're doing is saying, yes, you can have the meeting on this day. Or you should have the meeting on this day.
Yeah, I don't even know if we have any discretion in it. But yes, you're, you're, you're essentially endorsing their, their warrant. As the governing body of the town, you are assigning it, which then gives legal notice to the voters to show up at the polls on this day.
Right. In, in previous years, when we were not having a pandemic, there was an interim meeting between the posting of this warrant and the final approval of it. It was called a budget validation meeting, which was held in person and all members of the three towns that are in the RSU could participate and make amendments to the budget. And frequently, there often were amendments, so that the numbers that you're seeing on the warrant this evening were often, not always, but often changed slightly. Although the school board was not obligated to follow those amendments, they often did. This year, as was last year, there is no budget validation meeting because of the pandemic. However, they are holding a series of public hearings for input. But this is the presentation of the numbers that the school board has elected for the operation of the RSU five. So we don't technically vote until June eighth as a community on adopting these numbers as the school budget. But we are recommending this warrant going forward to be what is in front of the voters on June eighth.
Not, you're not recommending the content, but you are recommending that this is what the school board sent over.
That's right.
You're endorsing it, saying this is the true, these, these are the questions they are putting before the voters.
That's right.
I think it meant a lot more in the non-internet age, when you had to actually validate, you know, when your signature on the piece of paper told somebody standing in line at a voting booth in the eighteen hundreds that this was the actual important thing that they were supposed to vote on, because these seven counselors signed it.
Right. Okay, so we'll, ready to take a vote on that?
Yep.
Counselor Pilch.
Yes.
Counselor Daniele.
We need to read the be it ordained?
I'm sorry. Yes, we do.
Would you like me to do that?
Please do.
Be it ordained that the RSU budget validation election warrant be signed.
Thanks for catching that, Jake. I'm losing my sequence here this late in the evening. Okay, we'll go ahead and take the vote now that it's been moved and seconded. Counselor Pilch.
Yes.
Counselor Daniele.
Yes.
Counsel Bradley.
Yes.
Counsel Whitney.
Yes.
Counsel Lawrence.
Yes.
Counsel Riley.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. RSU warrant goes to the voters on June eighth. All right, that concludes our action items. We have, I believe, actually just one other business item. We have We have removed any discussion of the Bartow Library until a subsequent meeting. Tony advised us that there is no presentation on the downtown visioning. And so with great appreciation for your patience, Chrissy, we turn the floor over to you to give us an update on extended producer responsibility proposal. And again, thank you very much for your diligence to appear this evening and wait no less than four hours after we started to make your presentation. I appreciate you sticking with us.
You did.
Thank you, sorry. No, I appreciate it. Thank you all so much for 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 waiting up to have this presentation. I have a PowerPoint that I'd be happy to go through, but I could go through it quickly. I don't want to drag your night out even longer.
You should, you should have screen share, Chrissy, if you want it, so go ahead.
Okay, great. Just because I think it helps and I just want you to know what information's available to you. You know, if you ever want to go back. So, so, all right. Again, I'm Chrissy Etamolitz. Thank you so much for having me and Sustainable Maine Outreach Coordinator for the Natural Resources Council of Maine. NRCM is an environmental advocacy organization that's based in Augusta. We've been around for about sixty years. I wanted to talk to you about recycling reform, which is what we're calling to the general public extended producer responsibility for packaging, just because that term is a little bit jargony, and we think that recycling reform is a little bit easier. And we also have a website, recyclingreform.org, where you can learn about everything I'm going to present to you tonight, including important updates about timeline. So just real quickly, I'm going to talk to you about Maine's recycling challenges, the policy of EPR, and what towns are doing to show their support, which I hope Freeport will do as well. This slide is about the environmental benefits of recycling. I won't go into them, but just stress to share that recycling really is the right thing to do. We do need to take action to make sure that recycling is sustainable now and into the future. For those of you who care about carbon emissions, this is just a little slide. We use the EPA tool to really estimate how sort of the carbon emissions equivalencies of recycling. And so if we were to recycle fifty percent or more of our municipal solid waste, it'd be like taking one hundred and sixty six thousand cars off the road. This is a state goal that we've had for thirty years and never reached it. So why is we're so why do we need to care about recycling? In two thousand eighteen, countries in Asia, especially China, they started, you know, for a long time, the Western world had been exporting recyclables to these countries to manage those wastes. But in two thousand eighteen, China said, you know, we don't want to be a dumping ground anymore because a lot of those wastes for not, they weren't able to handle, especially cheap plastics. There's a lot of information on the internet about that in that story, so I won't go into too much depth about it. Then, as you all know, again, in two thousand twenty, the pandemic hit and both of these events really set recycling on an unsustainable path here in Maine and around the country. And Maine recycling rates peaked at forty percent and are falling. And the this slide is really just to show that packaging is about forty percent of our waste stream. And that's why, you know, in this presentation, I use the word packaging a little bit synonymously with recycling. So when you think of, when you look at what's in your blue bin, most of that stuff is packaging, product packaging. So this, when you go to the grocery store, all of that packaging that's on the shelves that contains the product you're buying, that's recycling, and that's why this law targets packaging in particular. There, this law is all over the world. Lots of countries use this law and they also use use it for printed paper, but this law won't address printed paper. Yeah, we hope in the future that it will. The underlying structural problems that we are having with recycling, what you as municipal officials see is that maybe you're overwhelmed with the cost of recycling. I just bred up the road in Brunswick and we, for two years in a row, have had to talk about cutting recycling altogether. This year, we had to save our program by cutting glass, so it's a real problem. You know, there's a lot of unexpected costs that towns have to suddenly think about because the recycling markets are not sustainable. For environmentalists out there, we see a lot of ocean plastic pollution. And that again comes from this long time habit we've had of sending our waste to countries that don't know how to manage them or don't have the infrastructure to manage them appropriately. The underlying problems is that this recycling really starts at the design stage of that product package. And in this country, we don't have any mechanism to hold the designers of that package accountable or to bring them into the conversation of recycling. So producers hold no responsibility to municipalities and our recycling programs to design packaging that can actually be recycled. And there's a lot of incentives to create wasteful packaging and unnecessary packaging. And at the end of the day, we have to bear that burden. Greenwashing and confusion is a major problem. Again, if you come to my town, you might not know that we're not recycling glass anymore and you might contaminate our waste stream and vice versa. So it really depends on where you are in the state. And then ultimately, this this system is something that taxpayers are one hundred percent responsible for. And volunteer efforts alone can't fix these problems because they start upstream at the design stage. I'm on our local recycling committee here in Brunswick and I work with recycling committees all over, all over the state. And they're, you know, these are volunteers who are trying to fix a problem that starts way upstream. And it kills me to see volunteers working so hard to fix a system that they don't have any control over. So we really, it's really time to fix this system. That slide. So extended producer responsibility, back to this term. This is a type of law that's, you know, it's a, the umbrella laws are called product stewardship. And these are sort of policy tools to, again, bring bring the makers of products into the conversation, give them some responsibility to manage those products at the end of their life. And so extended producer responsibility is an example that for packaging. Maine has eight product stewardship laws, so we're actually very used to doing these types of laws. How EPR would work is upfront, producers, you know, brands, really, producers and brands are a little bit synonymous, would pay a fee to a new product stewardship organization that would form based on the packaging that they introduced. And first and foremost, those fees would be tied to recyclability. So you're automatically getting at the design of the packaging so that it's at the end of the the lifecycle recyclable. Those fees would be redistributed to municipalities. And what I like about EPR is that it recognizes that municipalities are really doing a big service to brands by recycling and managing that that packaging in a way that is responsible. And so we we look at it as towns get should be compensated for providing that service. And this is what the law would do. You guys would submit information based on the tonnage that you are sending to your recycler and you would get reimbursed for that cost. You'd also get reimbursed for trash because the, you know, packages that have to go in the trash can, you know, that's not your fault. That's not your taxpayers' fault. That's the the brand's fault for not creating a package that can be recycled. So you would get compensated for that as well. And you could use that money for often operations and infrastructure, public education and increasing access and really finally putting the money behind recycling and other programs that it deserves in order to reach those goals. I say brands and you're probably scratching your head wondering who that is. These laws around the world tend to target the the biggest brands, the brands that can afford it. This is a snapshot of over five hundred companies that already pay for Canada's recycling programs because I think five provinces have this law in Canada. So these are brands that we we all recognize are on the shelves. So they're already used to doing this and we think that they should do it here in Maine, too. The Maine Department of Environmental Protection estimates that this law would save Maine taxpayers sixteen to seventeen and a half million dollars annually. And how it would work is that you, as a municipality, yeah, well, let me back up. This would be totally optional for you guys. If you wanted to continue funding recycling through taxpayer payments, that would be fine and you could do that. But this law would give you the option to get reimbursed. And so you would have to offer recycling, the full suite of recycling services. And you would have to submit data to that producer responsibility organization. And then they would give you those funds based on that data. And really, the annual recycling payments would be based on a median per ton basis for recycling and non-recycle packaging is based on a per capita basis. And that's really meant to, again, incentivize recycling and make sure that municipalities are recycling and disincentivize trash. And if these laws are proven around the world to increase recycling rates. So I'll show you some maps in a few minutes. But most, most countries in Europe has have this law and their recycling rates are well over fifty percent because, again, it puts that sustainable funding source behind recycling so that we can make investments where they need to be. So again, first and foremost, it incentivizes that packaging made with recyclable materials, so it can be recycled in the first place. It increases the recycling of more material types. And it fosters those recycling system infrastructure improvements. And importantly, it gives you your town and the state of Maine the money to increase access and convenience. So, you know, maybe there are neighborhoods or apartment units that don't have municipal recycling services or maybe your your central business district doesn't have recycling bins. Those those are some ways on how it increases recycling rates. This is just a quick look at that design problem I keep talking about. Really comes down to, you know, brands like to put on their labels information about what's technically recyclable, you know, what can be recycled in a lab somewhere, but not what's practically recyclable. This pink tag here is something that I got last summer in a plant that I bought at my local garden center. And you can see on the package, it's a little bit small, so I apologize. It has a recycling symbol with the number six in it and it says, go green, this tag is one hundred percent recyclable. Please place it in your home recycling bin to dispose. That is way off. That is not true at all. It is plastic. It will get mixed in with paper at the recycling facility and it will contaminate and cost taxpayers money. This brand is in Texas, they have no idea what's recyclable in Maine. So this is really a strong example of how we need to look upstream and we need a policy mechanism to actually put, to start that conversation. You know, this brand is not required to talk to us, but with EPR, this brand would be required to talk to the state of Maine about these labels. You know, it's just that these laws are more resilient around the world. The the province of Quebec has this law and we were talking with our friends in Quebec who operate the producer responsibility organization there. So they're experts and they're professionals in this world. And they said that the pandemic didn't really affect their recycling program. So it's another example of how having this law would, you know, be a long-term solution and municipalities could really weather the whims in the global recycling market. All right, so we're at the maps. EPR started in Germany in nineteen ninety one and it started to spread through Europe by two thousand three. By two thousand fifteen, other countries, you know, Canada, Brazil, Australia, Russia started to adopt this law. And in two thousand nineteen, China set goals to adopt this law by twenty twenty two, along with other countries. So it's really becoming the norm around the world. I've mentioned brands earlier and municipalities always want to know about small businesses because we're, you know, we're always really concerned about our main our main streets. And lawmakers are are concerned about this as well. And we've really looked at other laws around the world to figure out the right balance for small businesses. So there it will be a small business exemption, a business that makes less than two million total gross revenue will be exempt. If they make less than one ton of packaging, which is about ninety five thousand paper cups, it's even more for plastic packaging, you know, because it's so lightweight. The franchisee is not responsible, the parent company is. So your local Burger King operator, you know, that that person wouldn't be responsible, but the parent company would be. And then there's another category for businesses that are not small according to this definition, but that are big enough to produce enough waste that is of concern and they would be subject to low flat fees. Those flat fees are about five hundred dollars per ton and there would be opportunities for them to reduce those fees. And this little factoid about British Columbia, that that province, you know, their law targets the wealthiest five percent of businesses and they fund eighty percent of their programs. So again, this, these laws really lean heavy on those big players, those Amazon who can afford these laws. And now you're probably wondering about consumer prices. And we've asked a lot of time researching this question because we know you want to know. And the experts who we've asked, they say that there isn't any evidence that the costs are passed on to consumers and they explain that price is too complex to be affected by EPR laws alone. Things like geography, local economies and price sensitivity, you know, brands are really married to that X dot ninety nine price tag. Those things are more important than these laws. On top of that, the cost of these laws to these brands is very low. They pay to fractions of a penny per container, so they're not inclined to pass on a fraction of a penny. In cases that they do, we've been told that they pass on to luxury items where consumers are already expecting to pay more. And then importantly, EPR actually saves companies money because they get help on design efficiency. And I have some slides about that. This this image here, in Nova Scotia, they don't have this law. So their their Federation of Municipalities, which is which is like a Maine Municipal Association equivalent, they're advocating for this law because Quebec has this law and they benefit. But you can see here in this resolution that the Federation of Municipalities has, they say outright that people in Nova Scotia, Nova Scotia pay the same consumer prices as people in Quebec, even though they don't benefit from this law. So taxpayers are on the hook in Nova Scotia and they have the same consumer prices. Here's some cost-saving design examples. So in Belgium, big brands like L'Oreal are experimenting with reusable shampoo contain containers. So customers can refill their shampoo and that saves about half an ounce of plastic. So that's already some cost savings for the brand that they don't have to pass on to the consumer. In Italy, this is an example of a curtain rod accessory. And they got some design help on theirs and you can see the benefits. But importantly, they were able to fit eighty percent more on one shipment. So that's a huge savings that I'm surprised they didn't figure out on their own. But they got that design help and the product is all around better because it's better for the environment. They're saving money and recycling, it supports the recycling system. All right, so we're getting towards the end of this presentation. I apologize for going fast. This law is, this law has been a long time coming. We've been working on it for several years in the legislature. Last year, it got a ton of support, but it stopped because of COVID, because the legislature had to adjourn. I think there were a hundred and eighty eighty pieces of testimony and seventy three percent of those were in support. So there's a lot of support for this law. The bill was just printed, it was resubmitted by Representative Nicole Verhose of Ellsworth. And it is LD fifteen forty one and acts to support and improve municipal recycling programs and save taxpayer money. We just got the public hearing date, that'll be May tenth at nine AM. So we're actually up against a time crunch, so you have some options that I'll go over in a second here. The the way that towns have been showing their support for this law up until now is by adopting this municipal resolution. And this is the ask, this this resolution on the left here, this is something that NRCM crafted in partnership with the Maine Municipal Association because we wanted to give municipalities a vehicle for showing their support to the legislature for this law. Basically, this this resolution on the left just rec almost recaps with this presentation. It basically says, we're educated about EPR, we're concerned about recycling and we support the legislature in developing an EPR law. It's not tied to a specific bill and that's by design because we knew that, you know, it might not pass the first year. And then we were proven right with COVID. So we're not, we're encouraging municipalities to not tie it to a specific bill, but just to support the concept of EPR. So you can adopt this on the left as is, a lot of towns are doing that. They're just putting their 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 banner or their their header on on this language. Other towns are, you know, don't want to have this wordy document. So this town, Topsan, recently adopted this format and it's basically, it's almost a one-liner that says, in the spirit of EPR, the town of Topsan supports the concept of EPR for packaging and we encourage the legislature to continue working to develop a policy. So it can be as simple as that. And NRCM's commitment to municipalities is to deliver these to the public hearing on on your behalf and to make sure that like your lawmakers see this, to know that you're you support this and that it's good for you and and yeah, just so that they know. So far, we have twenty six towns representing over two hundred and eighty thousand majors showing their official support. These are the towns, they're on that website, recyclingreform.org, and you can click on them to get a sense of what other towns are doing. We're working on these other towns. I actually gave a presentation to Bangor yesterday about this, that they're considering it as well. And we really hope that we see Freeport on the list, along with these other towns. I don't know, I don't know if there are any members of the public watching this late at night. I'm sure hope that there are, but members of the public can also sign our petition. We have an adorable mascot boxee that you can follow on Facebook and Twitter to get the updates. And we have about two thousand petition signatures and we're going to deliver those to the legislature as well. And that is it for the presentation. Um, that is it for the presentation. I would be happy to take any questions you have.
Uh, Chrissy, I have a couple of uh, quick questions. One is, uh, we have a meeting uh, next week on May fourth. And um, if there was to be um, a, a vote of this council to support it. Would that be in time for you to uh, include it in your presentation at the May tenth hearing?
Yes, we will make that happen. Absolutely.
Okay, my second question was in the early part of your presentation, you talked about how the EPR law would work, which includes. Um, uh, a focus on, on recycling activity. Um, Freeport does not have a town-wide um, municipal trash service. We uh, by charter, we actually have private companies that provide trash pickup. Um, and in some cases, one of the providers uh, will pick up recycling as well. We've had a conversation here about potentially um, having um, uh, curbside recycling across the community. Would, would curbside recycling be a requirement for Freeport to participate in uh, the reimbursement? In other words, would we have to have a hundred percent of our community participating?
You wouldn't have to have your um, a hundred percent of your community participating, but you would have to offer the recycling service to the community. So a little bit of difference between participation and offering. So you want to, you want to offer it.
Okay, and that would obviously be at, at curbside, not at uh, the collection points around the town?
Um, I don't, I don't think it necessarily has to be curbside. Um, I think there's a lot of flexibility um, to how towns offer that.
But we, we have some experience about talking about curbside activities with trash and it's a, it's a hotwire issue that. Uh, immediately puts people far apart on, on the issue. So. Um, just hoping that we can um, find a way to participate in this without necessarily setting up something. Uh, other questions for uh, Chrissy? Thank you very much for your presentation. Doug?
I don't want to talk trash, but I do want to talk about recycling. And that is uh. In, I used to have a retail store. And with my retail store, when things came in, I unpacked, put things away. Now people shop online. And when they shop online, packaging is increased manyfold. Because it's an individual item that's being shipped, whereas I was buying it in twelves. In one box, they're buying it in single in a box. And it is, the packaging expenses there. But I believe, one of the ways that we could probably improve on our recycling and having materials that are appropriate. And then also have the cost being directed in the right area is to. Set a fee or a fine or a, some type of uh, fee structure that the. Online shopper has to pay for.
I mean, the, the, the law, I mean, that's absolutely true. The um, the increase in packaging has been huge, especially with COVID. Um, and this law does set up those um, those fee structures for the brands. So that, so it takes a little bit of a different approach and incentivizes the brand to not send you all those boxes and packages in the first place.
So I would support us voting on this uh, in our next meeting.
Other questions for Chrissy? Counselor Bradley?
Chrissy, um, it, it almost seems to be too good to be true. It doesn't cost the uh, consumer anything because the price of this isn't passed on. The municipality gets all the money, the recycling goes to the right places. What, what's the hitch? I mean, what, what would the, what do the critics of this program say? When um, they, they see what you're proposing?
Yeah, they're um, the, I mean, the, the, the town will have to do some work to make sure that you collect the data if you're not doing it already. And to offer those, that suite of um, recycling services. Um, there's um, you know, the opposition, the opposition honestly has been weak. It's the, it's the packaging companies saying that we don't know how to do this. But then you've got other countries saying, well, they do it for us. So um, their testimony has been quite weak. Um, and again, we are, have looked at those. We've asked the experts and they have not given us evidence that it's passed on, on staple goods. Again, they said that in cases where they do pass it on, it's on luxury items. Um, you know, I think um, there's. There's uh, you know, I think that the, the, the concern really comes from the, the medium-sized businesses in Maine. And whether or not, you know, how that'll affect them. Because it will, uh, you know, the, if you're making less than two million in total gross revenue. If you're um, producing more than one, uh, less than one ton of packaging, you're exempt. But if you're over those bars, then you're not exempt. Um, and those fees will be about five hundred to seventy-five hundred dollars for the first one to fifteen tons of packaging. Um, and, but I, I really believe that that's the way to do it because recycling does start at the design stage. And we need to start designing packages so that um, they can be recycled in the first place and to also be less wasteful. Um, so those are some of the things um, that I hear the most. Um, and then, you know, there's, there's also questions uh, from people in um, you know, the, the packagers. They like to say that we, you know, we need packaging for, to reduce food waste in the grocery stores. Um, but you know, that's not the way it's always been. You know, all this packaging hasn't always been the reality. And you know, maybe some of you remember long, long ago, there was less packaging. Um, so we think that they're bluffing and, and frankly, they, they had pretty bad testimony in our opinion last year. It's um, you, you can actually go online to read it yourself. If you, if you wanted to take a look, I could send you those links.
Is the, is, does a company like LL Bean have a position on this?
They did, they did not take a position last year. And they were not heard, and we have not heard again this year. We do have a business sign on, a business letter of support uh, on our website. And I think there's, oh, about seven businesses uh, that have signed on. And we're working with others to help them understand the law. Um, but you know, Patagonia signed on, Toden Co. signed on. So two businesses in Freeport have, are supporting this and they're going to provide testimony. Um, the uh, GoGo Refill Dental Lace, there's some main businesses that have signed on. There's a coffee shop that signed on. Um, Vagabond Coffee. So um, we have been talking with them. We're also talking with uh. The um, a lot of brewers in Maine and we're working to get their support, but they haven't committed yet. So there, you know, there is business support because they recognize what an impact they can have uh, on this issue.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Thanks for really sticking late with us here, Chrissy. I appreciate it. Um, very thorough um, uh, presentation. Like I said, we have a meeting uh, just next week on May fourth. Um, uh, so we can um, have some conversation about uh, adopting one, one of the two options that you provided us uh, as a possibility.
And maybe we can get you first on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, well, we wouldn't even require you to be here at our next meeting, but.
Okay.
But we'll uh, it, it would be an action item, so it'd be on the, uh, on the first part of the agenda as opposed to the other business. Let me, that we get that uh, that we get that uh, move forward here. The vice chair and I and, and the manager uh, will, will have a conversation about if we can really get that endorsed. And other counselors um, uh, to the degree you want to consider that, uh, feel free to communicate. And, and we'll have a chance to vote on something at, at our meeting next week. I'm, I'm, I'm particularly interested in seeing it happen. And I'm, I'm just to be fair to Chrissy here, if we're going to try and do something, we might as well. Try and do it prior to their May tenth public hearing in front of the legislature, which is the whole point of why they're asking us to join. Um, is to, is to endorse that. So we're, we're not agreeing to adopt this for Freeport next week. We'd be agreeing to support NRCM's uh, lobbying effort to get the state to pass it. So it would be a state law that would be passed. Other questions? Riley?
Um, any other items to discuss?
Uh, no, that's the end of our uh, agenda. Um, Counselor Whitney will be chairing the meeting next week because I've got to be out of town on Tuesday evening. Um, but um, that's, that's the last of our um, of, of our agenda.
Then I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, and so that will conclude our meeting at ten fifty-nine. Counselor Bill? Thank you, Chrissy. Uh, we have to vote.
Oh, yes.
Counselor Daniele?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
Counselor Whitney?
Yes, and thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Lawrence?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, thank you all. Uh, be kind to Tony next week. Um, she'll be chairing the meeting.
I can't wait.
Um, and uh, on that particular item, if you've got comments or questions, uh, just communicate. But um, Tony, Tony and I and Peter will work up what that's going to look like in terms of uh, potential language for us to consider. Again, it, it seems like what they're asking for is just an endorsement um, to support their efforts to pass the law. Not necessarily that we're saying this applies to Freeport immediately. So.
Don, will we reach out to any of the businesses like LL Bean and ask them what they think?
Um, I, I, I think that's a good idea, sure. I think that's a good idea.
I mean, if, one, we might encourage them to support it, but two, they may have some insights that would, would inform us.
Right. Right.
So who will do that?
Uh, Tony and I will talk with the manager about how we're going to communicate. We have a good communication channel with them right now, so. We'll just have to see uh, which, which person at Bean is going to respond to that.
Thank you.
All right, thanks all.
Good night.
Thank you, John.